Mr. City Attorney, please provide a readout from closed session.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The City Council is now back in open session, having met in closed session for the special meeting proceedings of June 16th, 2025. With respect to items A and B, I can report that the council by unanimous vote agreed to appoint Kanika Kith as interim city manager effective July 5th of this year. And then finally, with respect to item C, a report and update was provided by the Chief of Police and Commander Shazan. Questions and feedback were provided by the City Council, but no final reportable action taken. And that concludes my report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. The special meeting is now adjourned. It is now 5:25, 6:25 PM, and I call the San Fernando regular meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Patty Lopez.
Present.
Councilmember Victoria Garcia.
Present.
Councilmember Joel Fajardo.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mary Solorio.
Present.
Mayor Mary Mendoza.
Present. We have a quorum, and all council members are present and physically present, and no member are participating remotely for today's meeting. Madam City Clerk, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, will everyone please rise?
Hands over your heart and begin. I pledge allegiance to the court, a united space of America, and to the public for which stands one nation under God, indivisible and indivisible in its essence.
Thank you, may be seated.
At this time, I'm asking for approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve in a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Lopez.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Fajardo.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Solorio.
Yes.
Mayor Mendoza.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Anyone wishing to make a public statement, please fill out a blue form and submit it to the city clerk. The next item of the agenda is presentation of a certificate of recognition honoring city clerk Nick Kimball for the dedicated service to the city of San Fernando and the community. To the, what did I say? Oh, to the city manager, Nick Kimball, for the dedicated service of the city of San Fernando and the community. So sorry, Mr. Kimball. And I just want to say, today we honor and thank Nick Kimball for, as we present him with a certificate of recognition of his dedicated service to the city of San Fernando. His last day with us will be July 4th, and while we're grateful for all that he's done, it's hard not to feel the weight of this moment. So I'm going to have Councilmember Fajardo read the recognition.
Thank you. So we'll begin by reading the recognition and then saying a few words about him. So whereas since July 2014, Nick Kimball has honorably served the city of San Fernando with distinction, demonstrating unwavering integrity of deep commitment to public service, and a steadfast dedication to the well-being of our community. Whereas Mr. Kimball's visionary leadership was instrumental in guiding the city out of the brink of bankruptcy, restoring financial health and building a stronger and sustainable fiscal foundation through disciplined budgeting, strategic planning, and responsible stewardship of public resources. Whereas, under his leadership, the city achieved a balanced budget and surplus in record time, laying the groundwork for continued growth, investment in infrastructure, and enhanced services for all residents of San Fernando. And whereas, Mr. Kimball led with transparency, ethics, and professionalism, earning the respect and trust of the City Council, city staff, and the broader community. Whereas, his collaborative, solutions-driven approach united departments, supported staff development, and fostered a culture of accountability and innovation across city operations. Whereas, Mr. Kimball played a pivotal role in navigating the city through the challenges of the COVID-19 pandemic, ensuring continuity of services, fiscal stability, and the safety and resilience of the community during unprecedented times. And whereas, the City Council recognizes and expresses profound gratitude for Mr. Kimball's outstanding contributions, his unwavering dedication to public service, and the lasting positive impact he has made on all the cities present and future. Now therefore, the San Fernando City Council hereby commends and honors Nick Kimball for 11 years of exceptional service as city manager, and extend its heartfelt appreciation and best wishes for continued success in all future endeavors. Thank you, Mr. Kimball. If we can all give him a round of applause as well. I thought this resolution was going to affirm Nick Kimball Day, but we'll have to save that for another meeting and invite him back. But once again, I wanted to thank you for your many contributions to the city. You came in at a very difficult time and stayed in through even harder times. At one point, when you served as interim, I know a department had left. I think that there were a couple of vacancies. And you were the quasi-community development director, chief of police, city clerk, you know, a little bit of everything for a certain period of time. And while it is sad to see you leave, I know that you leave us in good hands. You've done an incredible job of training a world-class staff, and so your legacy will continue to live on in San Fernando. I hope that you come to some of our events from time to time. It would be great to see you, because this will always be a home to you. So thank you for your many contributions.
Councilmember Solorio, you have some presentations for Mr. Kimball.
Thank you. So I'd like to take the time to bring up Assemblymembers Representative Gustavo, the Senators' Representative Brandon, and the Congresswoman Luz Rivas, Representative Cynthia. And I think, it's funny, because when I asked Kanika, actually, I said, hey, we're going to get certificates from all these offices, right? And she said, no, Nick doesn't want these certificates. Not that he doesn't want them, sorry. He said, no, because he doesn't want the attention. And I said, what? Of course he's going to get the attention, because he's given this city so much. And Nick, this is the least that we can do to present you with certificates and proclamation and thanking you for the many, many years of service and the transformation that you've brought on to San Fernando and making it so much better. So I'm going to hand it off to Brandon, because they look like they're in line with her. So Brandon, if you could come up to the mic. Or you want to go first, Cynthia? Okay, Cynthia's going to go first, and she's here.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So I do have a couple of remarks, and I'll go ahead and read from them, if that's okay, Nick. And councilmembers and me. So, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Cynthia Becerra, and I'm a field representative with Congresswoman Luz Rivas. And on behalf of the Congresswoman, I would like to extend a heartfelt gratitude to Nick for his many years of dedicated service to the city of San Fernando. The Congresswoman sends her warmest wishes as you embark on this exciting new opportunity. Nick, your leadership and commitment have been instrumental in shaping San Fernando into the vibrant and welcoming community it is today. Not only do I have the privilege of representing this community in my professional capacity, but I've also lived in the city of San Fernando for nearly as long as you've served it. And I can sincerely say that your work has contributed to why I love it so much here. Thank you, Nick, for your service, and thank you for all the opportunity to speak today. And on behalf of Congresswoman Luz Rivas and the House of Representatives, we do have a certificate for you, and we'll go ahead and hand it over at the end of the other presentations. Thank you.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Brandon Gonzalez, and I am District Representative for Senator Caroline Menjivar. And on behalf of Senator Menjivar, Nick, I just want to say it's been a real pleasure to have known you these past two years and to have worked with you along the city here. And on behalf of the California State Senate and the 20th District, we thank you for your service for 11 years with the city of San Fernando and everything you have done for the community here. So thank you very much.
Hi, Council. My name is Gus. I am the Field Representative for Assemblywoman Celeste Rodriguez. And even though she couldn't be here today, she did have some words I wanted to say on her behalf. We want to take a moment to recognize and thank Nick Kimball for the past 10 years Nick has served the city of San Fernando with commitment, leadership, and sincere belief in what our community can be. As mayor, I had the privilege of working closely with Nick through some of the city's most challenging and transformative moments, from navigating a global pandemic to securing investments in our parks, infrastructure, social services, and small businesses. Nick has been the engine of the city, and his work has not gone unnoticed. Nick, thank you for your service, your partnership, and your passion for seeing San Fernando thrive. You've left a lasting legacy in the city, and we thank you. The Assemblywoman wishes you the very best in your next chapter. And also, for me personally, I know I haven't been here as long, but you've really helped our office out a lot at any time when it comes to the city of San Fernando. You, no question, and great. Yeah, you've just been a great help, and I appreciate that myself, also being from San Fernando as well. So thank you.
I think it's so lovely to have, Brandon, you're going to have to move into San Fernando, apparently, because everybody, all the other representatives live in San Fernando. But it is so lovely, and it's so fast. So thank you so much for doing the fast turnaround. I think I saw you all on Thursday or Friday, and I said, hey, can you please get these certs? And you all said, yes, of course, right away. So we appreciate you and the Congresswoman and the Senator and the Assemblywomen. So send our thanks on our behalf. Thank you. And I'd like to just say a few words, Nick. I haven't known you for very long. I've only known you for the last two and some years. But I'm greatly appreciative of the work that we've been able to build together. I know that many of the other councilmembers can speak of the 11 years or many years they have served. But I think it speaks volumes, because so many, so many days are spent here in San Fernando. I think that you spend more time in San Fernando than you do in your own home. And that goes to show, because we all know who your kids are, what their names are, what they do. Your daughter getting accepted to Stanford, your son playing golf, all the wonderful things. And you share your family with us, and I think that's the legacy that, the big, the legacy and the big shoes that you leave behind for our next city manager to fill, because you've embedded yourself so well in our community, and everybody knows you. I mean, you speak Spanish to our residents. You're always out in the community, so it's all right, Spanish. He's still learning. But we definitely thank you, and for all the many, many years of service. Again, we don't know what we're going to do without you, but we appreciate you, Nick. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you. I would just echo, I thought that that certificate was beautiful, and I would echo my colleague's words. I would just add, Nick, you have been committed to our city officially for many, many years. You volunteered for your role during one of the most tumultuous times of our city's history, and you allowed our city to thrive. I believe that your skills were a blessing for our city. In this special place, you led the city to meet many different city council goals. Thank you for your service. Thank you for using your knowledge, your skills, and your experience to serve our city. We wish you the absolute best. You will not be easily replaced.
Councilmember Lopez.
Gracias, Nick. Thank you for all the patience that you have with me, especially during the pandemic, when I asked you to support the idea to have those food drives. You know, it wasn't easy, and together with the Mayor Mendoza, it was amazing that can support our families and, you know, just give you so much headache, you know, in the last past few years, you know. But you know where it came from. You know, I'm coming from the care for the community. But we noticed, you know, all the hard work that you put into our city, and from the bottom of my heart, and we have all the residents, especially the Latino ones, and you care so much for our city. Thank you, and we wish you the best.
Okay, Nick, it's my turn. It's not going to be easy. But I want to personally thank you. I have tremendous respect for the way you led the city with strength, professionalism, and humility. Over the years, you've managed to work with a variety of councilmembers, each with our own unique personalities and leadership styles, and you've always managed to bring us together. That is not easy. That's not an easy task when you're dealing with five strong leaders, year after year. You built a strong, capable management team that worked hand in hand with you. You've laid a solid foundation, and I know that your team will continue to move the city forward because of the structure and support you put in place. When I first started the council, I didn't really know what it meant to serve in this role. You helped me understand the process, explaining agenda items with patience, never making me feel less than for asking. That kind of leadership and mentorship stays with a person, and I'll always be grateful for it. I will truly miss you, your presence at the meetings, your guidance, your insight, your steady hand. Your knowledge is vast. You're a, you are in every sense of the word, an economist. You're also a great father, a good man, and someone who has always led with fairness. You taught me the importance of balance, how to make requests and advocate for things in a thoughtful, responsible way. And I will forget, and I will never forget those moments when I challenged something, and you gently explained to me. It's, and I usually end up saying, all right, Nick, you're right. And after hearing your reasoning, I knew you were right. And I just, okay, that's fine, Nick. All right, you told me, I understand. And you, all along with the council years, along with, several years back, helped bring the city out of bankruptcy. That alone is an incredible legacy, and we owe you a great deal. Thank you, Nick. Thank you for your integrity, your kindness, and your unwavering service to the city of San Fernando. You will be missed deeply. So we will take some pictures.
Madam Mayor, if I may, just a few, just a few quick words. I'll be quick. I just wanted to mention, you know, 12 years ago, right before I started working here, I didn't really know, even though I lived in the Valley, Granada Hills area, I didn't really know San Fernando was its own city. So when I finally got this opportunity to serve as Director of Finance, I'll tell you that I've probably learned more from this city, and I love this little city, and it's been so integral in my growth as, you know, in my career, but also just as a person. So although, you know, I've appreciated serving San Fernando, it's been, it's been a great honor. I would say that I've probably learned, I'm taking away a lot more personally, because I've learned so much from the community, from all of the councilmembers that I've worked with over the years, from all of the staff I've worked with over the years. So I'm probably taking more than I gave, but that's, but, you know, that's just because that's the nature of San Fernando. So I've really appreciated my time here. I very much am uncomfortable being out front, so today, today's not the most comfortable for me. I like, I like it when other people are taking credit for all the good work that we get to do here, because you all have earned it as well. So thank you for all this recognition, and again, I think, I think San Fernando's given me more, more than I've, than I feel I've given San Fernando. But that's because San Fernando is such a, such a great little community, and I've learned so much here. So I appreciate the opportunity to serve over the last 11 years.
At this time, on the agenda is decorum in order. Mr. City Attorney, can you please read the decorum in order?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. This is the decorum in order admonition for the San Fernando City Council. The City Council, elected by the public, must be free to discuss issues confronting the city in an orderly environment. Members of the public attending City Council meetings shall observe the same rules of order and decorum applicable to the City Council as set forth in the San Fernando procedural manual. Any person making impertinent, derogatory, or slanderous remarks, or who becomes boisterous while addressing the City Council or while attending a City Council meeting, and where such conduct is found to be disruptive to the proceedings, may be removed from the room if the presiding officer so directs the Sergeant of Arms, and such person may be barred from further audience before the City Council. That concludes the admonition, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is public statements. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public statements this evening?
Yes, thank you. This is the time and place for public comments on items on the agenda or other city issues. If there's anyone in the council chamber wishing to speak, please fill out the blue form located on the table in the council chamber's entrance and submit it to the city clerk. When your name is announced to speak, please walk up to the podium to address the City Council. Please voluntarily state your name and address and speak clearly and directly. Please voluntarily state your name and address and speak clearly and directly into the microphone. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Individuals using interpretation services will be given six minutes to ensure non-English speakers have the same opportunity to address the city council. Please note that the interpreter will pause the speaker, the speaker frequently to allow adequate time for translating their comments as closely and accurately as possible. Callers wishing to provide a live public comment, please close your YouTube stream of the city council meeting as there is an approximate eight second delay and will interfere with the live meeting streaming to YouTube. When it is your turn to speak, you will be identified by announcing the last four digits of your telephone number. Lastly, please understand that the city council is unable to respond to questions in order to comply with public meeting requirements and must refrain from engaging in any dialogue during the public comment period. City staff will have your contact information and will be able to follow up directly with you regarding your question.
The first three speakers we have tonight are Adrián Pérez, Dolores Rodríguez, and Paulina Torres.
Good evening, Council. My name is Adrian. I will be speaking on item 14. You may remember me from previous meetings. I spoke in favor of sanctuary city policies. I brought up the historical discrimination made on immigrants, as well as studies that show immigrants are less likely to commit crimes. My comments mentioned the fear surrounding unethical deportation. Two months later, that fear has only grown and become more reasonable by recent events. ICE arrest and deportations have surged with the defense that's done to remove criminals. Yet, a significant number of detainees do not even have a criminal history. Some detainees aren't even immigrants, they're US-born citizens. Immigrants fear for their safety, safety to where they can no longer go to work or leave home to provide for their families. There have been cases of citizens taking advantage of the situation by disguising themselves as ICE agents to carry out unlawful actions. Peaceful protests against ICE were met with police beatings and tear gassing. All this needless suffering needs to be challenged at all levels in the country, starting at the local level. I'm well aware that the city of San Fernando does not cooperate with federal immigration forces. If you are committed to serving your community and upholding the rights and dignity of all individuals, I have suggestions. One, expand on programs that educate citizens on their rights and provide them training on handling situations with ICE. Two, organize rapid response teams to monitor ICE activity and provide resources for those affected by deportation. Three, assist with giving free or low-cost legal services to immigrants facing deportation. Four, protect places such as schools or churches from ICE operations. And I'd like to kindly ask that you move item number 14 to the top, the top of the agenda. Thank you.
Buenas tardes a todos.
Good evening, everybody.
Mi nombre es Dolores Rodríguez y he estado aquí anteriormente.
My name is...
Dolores Rodríguez.
Dolores Rodríguez.
He estado aquí anteriormente.
I have been here before.
Porque me preocupa lo que está sucediendo en nuestra ciudad.
What's going on in our city worries me.
Estaba viendo las estadísticas de que nuestra ciudad es el 93% de hispanos.
I was looking at the statistics, 93% of our citizens are Hispanic.
Y los tiempos que estamos viviendo ahora está en contra de nosotros.
And the times we are facing now are against us.
Aunque muchos de nosotros tenemos ya documentos legales porque somos primera o segunda generación.
Although many of us do have legal documents because we are first, second, or third generation.
Pero hay bastantes hispanos que no tienen documentos.
There are many Hispanics who don't have documents.
Que están atemorizados.
They are scared.
Y para mí fue algo que estoy aquí para agradecer por esa manifestación de apoyo para los hispanos.
And for me, I'm here to thank because, give thanks because of the protests that took place on behalf of Hispanics.
Y quiero agradecerles porque eso dice mucho de ustedes que están en el gobierno.
And I want to say thank you because that says a lot from you who are in a governmental space, place.
Jefe de la policía.
To the chief of police.
Le quiero decir.
I want to say.
Entendemos su trabajo.
We understand your work.
Y yo le pido perdón por todos los que se han rebelado en contra de ustedes.
And I apologize because on behalf of everyone who has rebelled against you all.
Soy un ministro ordenado.
I am an ordained minister.
Y Dios dice que respetemos a las autoridades.
And God calls us to respect our authorities.
Dios le ha puesto un trabajo muy difícil.
He has given you a really hard job.
Al igual que todos ustedes que están aquí.
Same as everyone here.
El pueblo de San Fernando está esperando qué movimiento van a hacer cada uno de ustedes.
And the people of San Fernando are watching, seeing what kind of movements you will make.
Y nosotros como personas que, que somos de alguna forma, yo soy un líder comunitario.
And ourselves, in my case, as a leader, as a community leader.
Quiero decirles gracias por todo lo que están haciendo y lo que van a hacer.
I want to say thank you for everything that you are doing, everything you will do.
Por todo el pueblo hispano una vez más.
Or the Hispanic people.
Y yo quisiera orar por la protección para todos los policías.
And I would love to pray for the protection of all policemen.
Tienen un trabajo muy peligroso.
The job you have is very dangerous.
Y cuando están provocando al pueblo, las personas que están en autoridad provocan al pueblo, hay reacción del pueblo.
And people in authority sometimes provoke people to react certain ways.
Me estoy, me estoy refiriendo al presidente.
And by that I mean, I'm referring to the president, the administration.
Y no es nada que sea oculto para nosotros.
This is nothing that is a secret to all of us.
Sin lugar a duda, Dios le va a llamar a cuentas.
And undoubtedly, he will be called to be accountable.
Pero eso va a ser entre él y Dios, ¿verdad?
But that's just between him and God.
Ahora nosotros, nuestro trabajo es orar por las autoridades.
Now, our job is to pray for the authorities.
Estoy aquí para orar por todos, pero específicamente por protección para los policías.
And I am here to pray for everyone, but specifically for the protection of our police body.
Y también para que Dios les dé sabiduría a cada uno de ustedes, cómo trabajar, cómo actuar en esta situación que jamás estuvo.
And also for God to be able to give you all wisdom in how to move, how to react in this situation that hasn't been seen before.
Voy a orar.
So I will pray.
Bendito Padre Celestial.
Heavenly Father.
Dios bueno.
Good God.
Dios justo.
Just God.
Dios misericordioso.
Merciful God.
Tú pusiste a cada una de estas personas en la autoridad que están.
You placed each and every one of these people in the place of authority that they're in.
Y vengo yo en representación de muchos que estamos orando por ellos.
And I come here as a representative of many who are praying for them.
Yo pongo al cuerpo de policía en tus manos.
And I place the police body in your hands.
Para que levantes un bayado de protección.
So that you would raise up a protection barrier.
Por cada uno de ellos.
For each one of them.
Por sus familias.
For their families.
También te pido por esa sabiduría que viene de lo alto para cada uno de los miembros del consejo.
And I ask you to provide wisdom for every one of the members of the council.
Lo pido en el nombre de Cristo Jesús.
And I ask you in the name of Jesus.
Amen.
Amen.
Gracias por su atención.
Thank you for your attention.
Good evening, city council members and community members. My name is Paulina Torres. I am the field deputy representative for LA County Supervisor Lindsay Horvath. I'd like to begin my remarks first by thanking you, Nick, for all the hard work you've done. You've served the city selfishly. And although we haven't known each other for, for so long, I think the messages I've heard from every single member on, on the city council and also my, my counterparts in the other offices speaks very highly of you. I also want to thank you for being an example to us as staffers, an example to your family, to your daughter, and to your extended community. But above all, for being an example for the future of public leaders in this, in this world, as we all know that we need more people taking spaces like these. Thank you, Nick. I also wanted to promote, not promote, but more so share an immigrant resource guide that our office has created because of everything happening in the world. This immigrant resource guide can be found in the table in the back. It has frequented services for the county. It has legal resources, family and healthcare resources. It has utilities, business, know your rights, immigrant worker protection act, some information on education, and also some information for the youth. I would also like to echo some of the concerns that have been raised by the previous two speakers. And thank you all for your, for your hard work. I will be sharing the immigrant resource guide in Spanish. Once it's available, it's currently with our graphics team, so I apologize for it only being in English. Thank you so much for your time. Again, thank you.
All right, the next speaker we have is Erica, followed by Blanca Mejía and Ricardo Benitez.
Dios les bendiga a todos.
Bless you all.
Es mi primera vez que estoy acá y le doy gracias a Dios.
I'm grateful to be here and give thanks to God.
A cada uno de ustedes.
Because of all of you.
Cuando los miro pienso en Dios.
When I see you, I remind myself of God.
Dios nunca se equivoca.
He makes no mistakes.
El que ustedes estén en este momento.
And what you, that you would be here today.
Tan difícil.
In this difficult time.
Yo creo que en el momento que estamos pasando.
And I believe in the times that we're facing.
Es bien difícil tomar decisiones.
It's very hard to make decisions.
Justas y sabias.
That are just and wise.
Pero creo que Dios está en control.
But I believe that God is in control.
Quiero agradecer a cada uno de ustedes.
And I want to thank each and every one of you.
Porque yo sé que es un trabajo que Dios ha puesto en el corazón de ustedes.
Because I know that you're carrying out a job that God himself has placed in you.
Quiero que sepan.
I want you to know.
Estamos orando.
That we are praying.
Estamos unidos en oración.
We are joined in prayer.
Pidiendo una protección divina sobre cada uno de ustedes.
Asking for divine protection over each one of you.
Porque es una gran responsabilidad.
Because this is a great responsibility.
Déjeme decirle.
Allow me to say.
Que miro a los policías.
That I look at the police body.
Y le digo al Señor que los guarde.
And I ask the Lord to keep them.
Porque el salir a las calles.
Because going out into the streets is very hard.
La gente está muy enojada.
People are very angry.
Y estamos orando para que Dios ponga la paz.
And we are praying so that God.
Esa paz que dice su palabra que sobrepasa todo entendimiento.
That peace that the scriptures say surpass all understanding.
Y muchas gracias.
And thank you.
Por apoyar a todos los hispanos.
For supporting Hispanics.
Aqueles que vinieron con sueños.
Those who came here with a dream.
Y se han truncado los sueños de muchos.
And many of those have been frustrated.
Pero sabemos que Dios.
But we know that God.
Va a tomar el control.
Will take control.
De lo que está pasando.
Of everything that is happening.
Yo sé que está acá el jefe de la policía.
And I know the chief of police is here, God bless you.
Entrenar a sus, a las personas que trabajan con ustedes es bien difícil porque se enfrentan a una situación bien dura en las calles.
And I think training the type of people that you train, it must be really hard because of hardships you encounter on the streets.
Y a cada uno de ustedes que están en cada cia.
And every one of you who's sitting on a chair.
Dios los bendiga.
God bless you.
Y quiero orar por ustedes.
I want to pray over you.
Señor Jesús.
Jesus.
Te doy, te doy las gracias.
I thank you.
En este momento, padre.
In this moment, Father.
Yo bendigo a cada uno.
I bless each one.
De los que toman decisiones, padre.
Of those who make decisions here.
Para mejorar esta situación.
To better the situation.
Señor amado.
Beloved Lord.
Toma el control.
Take control.
Y te ruego.
And I plead.
Que cada uno de los que están tomando decisiones, padre.
Let every one of them who makes decisions.
Se han dirigidos por tu Espíritu Santo.
Be guided and directed by your Holy Spirit.
Te pido así también, señor.
I also ask, Lord.
Que los guardes.
That you would keep them.
Que los dirijas.
That you would guide them.
Que les muestras, padre.
And that you would show them, Lord.
A través de tu Espíritu.
Through your Holy Spirit.
A decidir, Padre Celestial.
To decide.
Por lo justo.
For what is just.
Porque tú eres un Dios justo, padre.
Because you are a just God.
Un Dios de amor.
A God of love.
En el nombre de Jesús, padre.
In the name of Jesus.
Pongo una protección divina sobre cada policía, señor.
I speak of divine protection over each policeman.
Sobre cada autoridad.
Over each authority here.
Señor que sale a las calles.
Anyone who goes into the streets.
Señor Jesús.
Jesus.
Te ruego, padre, en esta hora.
I ask you, Lord, in this hour.
Tomes el control, señor.
That you would take control.
Te pido también, señor.
I also pray, Lord.
Por esas personas, padre.
For the people.
Que tienen mucho enojo, Padre Celestial.
But carry so much anger.
Tu palabra dice, señor.
Your word says.
Mis pasos dejo.
I give you my peace.
Mis pasos doy.
My peace I leave you.
Yo no la doy como el mundo la da.
And I don't give it like the world gives it.
Por esa palabra, señor.
For that word, Lord.
Te ruego, Padre Celestial.
I pray.
Que la pongas en cada corazón, señor.
That you would place it in every heart.
Y te ruego, amado Dios.
And I pray.
Que reine una paz, padre.
That there would be peace reigning.
Sobrepase a todo entendimiento, señor.
That would surpass all understanding.
En el nombre de Jesús, señor.
In the name of Jesus.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Erica. We want to know what you were doing to get ICE off the streets. ICE is terrorizing our community. They are abducting people off the street. I am here today because other people in my community asked me to come because they did not feel safe leaving their house because of the racial profiling that ICE has been doing in our community. People in our community are afraid to leave the house, including US citizens, who because of the color of their skin, have told me they do not feel safe on the streets in our community. What are you doing to keep our community safe from ICE? I also want to second what the first man here said. We need direct community action to protect our community members from ICE. We need to be able to share resources and help people who are being taken by ICE and who are not being given the due process that they deserve regardless of immigration status. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Ricardo Benitez. I want to talk about item number five. I strongly support the purchase of the new vehicle for the San Fernando Police Department. Let San Fernando become the first city on California to equip our police vehicle with full bulletproof protection. Vehicle safety features needed. I propose that the following part on each vehicle be bulletproof. Front winchels, front side doors on windows, driver and the passenger to protect the officers. Rear doors with protection with glass and, and, and doors to protect the canine because they always go in the back of the vehicle. The rear window, the, the rear winchels, trunk and roof, the same protection should apply to SUVs. Prison accidents highly are needed. We all saw the happening on the freeway 101 in Los Angeles. We also witnessed the incident involve an officer in Baldwin Park. This situation occurred because the vehicle were not bulletproof. Thankfully, those officers were able to protect and get the protection under the freeway bridge that day in Los Angeles. Otherwise, there would be a smudge for all the rocks the people were trying to the cars. And without the protection and the bulletproof, if you had the protection, the vehicles, that would be saving life of officers. This is clear reminder that safety of officer, the police officer directly impact the safety of the community. So, and also I want to talk about the number 12. I was. I was reading in the budget of the city online about the need or increase the budget because I saw the city was taking a 40% out of the budget from the sewer and water. So, and I feel that I might comment, I see over here that is on the on the agenda requesting a race into the need to continue working on the sewer and the water. And also, oh, okay, thank you.
Is Blanca Mejia in?
Caller adding in 3412, do you have a public comment?
Yes.
You may begin.
I have a comment. Okay. My comment is ICE is traumatizing our community. Our streets and stores are empty because people are afraid of being assaulted, having their rights violated, or being disappeared. They aren't going to work or living their lives normally. I hope the council acts to protect the people of our community, no matter their race or immigration status. We need direct action to protect the community. Thank you.
We do have an additional public speaker, Emily Quiñones.
Hello, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Emily Quiñones, and I'm here to speak on item 14. Just briefly want to share concerns that others have been bringing now for a community that is filled by a lot of undocumented immigrants. Being a child of undocumented immigrants myself, I would like to bring the concerns of what action is being done by our city to help our members. I would also like to call for direct response to help our members learn what their rights are, documented or undocumented, so that we can really make sure we're protecting our community members. You know, all the things that are being said about our community, about our undocumented neighbors. You know, it's not true. So I really call for the city of San Fernando, for our council members to really do something about it, make programs to make people learn what are their rights, help us maybe practice like what to do in a situation, maybe make more resources, have more funding for those that have been deported for family members that have been left without an income due to maybe the breadwinner of the family being deported. So I really ask for the city council and for all of you to look within your hearts to really see these are my neighbors that are being deported. These are my children's teachers. These could be my family members. So I really ask for you to look within yourselves to do something about it because this could be your family as well. So, thank you very much.
That concludes public comment.
We have another speaker.
We do have one more speaker, Sergio Amalfitano.
So, yeah, ICE was spotted basically all over the valley, right? San Fernando Mission Hills, Pacoima. In terms of what city council can do, just a suggestion, we as employers, as employees, we do have rights. We can put, you know, stop employees only. They should realistically respect, you know, privacy laws and whatnot. There's certain restraints that they need to follow. And I haven't seen anything in that regards in social media, you know, official city of San Fernando or Chamber of Commerce. If we can maybe set something up where we can teach people their rights. You know, I've seen some stuff that says know your rights, have a know your rights card. But if we can actually have some sort of class or, I don't know, some sort of symposium, I feel like that would be very helpful for everybody. You know, and in terms of sanctuary city status, I know that we can't necessarily, you know, I know that that just means that we don't participate with ICE, right? That PD doesn't help ICE. But there has to be something that PD can do. There has to be something that we can do in terms of protecting or denying them entry or aiding them or anything like that. Like if we're all paying taxes to have people protect and serve us from every level of government, but they can't do anything because they are superseded by the federal government, what can we do? What do we pay taxes for? What do we have laws in the state of California for? In the city of San Fernando for? If they can just kidnap us, if they can kidnap our friends and family? So, you know, if we could just get more than know your rights, I guess, information, if we can do something actionable where we can stop ICE and realistically prevent them from kidnapping, you know, community members, I would really appreciate that. You know, I don't know what the answer is, obviously, because you're going against the federal government. But, you know, we have our own rights. We have our own civil rights, our own ethics, our own laws. So if you could uphold them in some way, shape, or form, I would really appreciate that. At this point, everybody's just scared. Everybody's just worried. So, yeah, thank you.
We have two additional speakers. Zairet Gurdio and Sabrina Rivera.
Good afternoon. I just kind of came up here, I didn't expect to speak. But even myself, being a DACA recipient, I feel like the only reason I even felt encouraged to show up in this room today is because of the community that I hold here in San Fernando from growing up here for so many years. I know, you know, like having familiar faces in the room, it really does build courage. And even to you guys, like I do appreciate the fact that you guys went back on the sanctuary city status. So even you guys enacting those policies to protect us, like I genuinely, from the bottom of my heart, I do appreciate that. And maybe not calling San Fernando a sanctuary city was the correct move. And for that, I'm honestly grateful because the administration is specifically targeting sanctuary cities. So maybe at the end, having, you know, having that discussion with you guys and the community, it did end up being for the better of San Fernando. So with that being said, I think it's about time that communities start to create action plans. And I think San Fernando is the best community to do that because even though we're so small, we're very resourceful. When a street is being closed or there's an emergency happening, you got a text message from the police department or from the city letting its residents know, like, hey, stay away from McLei because a light post is down. So how can we can't do that with these immigration raids? You know, I know you guys can't interfere physically, but it's at that point where teaching immigrants, teaching us know your rights, that doesn't do anything anymore because we have no rights right now just because of your skin color. So, you know, like I don't even know what to say, what I would want from you guys. But what I want for my community, for myself, is prevention. If they're here, I would like to know the same way, you know, I know when a light street post is down or when there is an accident. So I do believe that we have the resources to keep each other safe. And I think if you guys don't step up, the community will do that for you. And that's not what we should be doing. Like, you know, Sergio said, like, everyone, I pay my taxes. I'm on DACA, I'm undocumented, but guess what? I still pay my taxes too. So I want to make sure that when I'm old and I'm retired and I can no longer walk, that I live the life that my community also let me live. Because to me, the U.S. is my home. You know, if I go back to Mexico, my family is there, but I don't even know my family because of borders. You know, to me, you guys are essentially the family that I've created here in the U.S. And it's not okay the way we're being treated. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Sabrina Rivera, and I'm here because the situation is real. It's urgent, and it's happening right here in our neighborhoods. People in my community are scared. They're scared to go to work, scared to take their kids to school, scared to go get groceries. These are not criminals. They are our neighbors. They've lived here for years. They pay taxes, they contribute. They love their families just like anyone else. But ICE is showing up in unmarked vehicles, wearing masks, not identifying themselves, and that's creating fear and chaos. We've seen online and in the news that even when people comply, they are still being hurt. What about the people who don't have family to support them? What about the parents who have younger children and no one to take them to school or care for them if something happens? What about the workers who can't afford to miss a shift when they're too afraid to step outside? Yes, I understand that laws exist, but our community is being targeted and left in the dark. There needs to be accountability, transparency, and protection. So I'm here speaking for them because they deserve to be heard too. Thank you.
Our next speaker. Our next speaker we have is Mercedes Satello.
Hello, council members. My name is Mercedes Satello, and I have a disability. I have autism. And it's my first time coming here for a meeting. My mom, she's a hard worker, and she's been here for San Fernando. She raised me. But she raised a wonderful man in her life that even he's scared. He's an immigrant himself. And I'm terrified for the city here. I'm really scared. My brother had a recent incident with ICE, and it's very terrifying. And I'm very shaky right now. But, you know, I'm here speaking on behalf of, it's scary. And I've lived here for San Fernando. I've gone to San Fernando Elementary, Middle School, and High School here. It's my town, it's where I live. And this fear strikes a chord. Just recently, we had that incident. And I honestly want something done here. I want, you know, I'm scared and terrified for my community of Latinos and everything in between. And I just wish something would be better done and to for my community, mi gente, and everything in between. And especially as someone with a disability, but also have loving father who's hardworking every day to raise us and everything, especially for me. I just want things to be done. I'm just terrified. And I just, you know, I care about my dad, and I just want the best for him. So, yeah, thank you.
At this time, I believe that concludes public comment.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is consent calendar. Does anyone wish to pull an item for discussion? If none, the motion, is there a motion in a second?
Removed.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Lopez.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Fajardo.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Solario.
Yes.
Mayor Mendoza.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, we will be doing item number 11 at this time. We're going to move the agenda a little bit around, and then we're going to go to item number 14 after. Item number 11 is discussion and consideration to appoint a city council liaison representative to the Greater Los Angeles County Vector Control District Board of Trustees. We'll pass this on to city clerk Julia Fritz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, Madam Mayor and city council members. Tonight, we are requesting city council consideration to appoint a representative to serve as the city's liaison to the Greater Los Angeles County Vector Control District Board of Trustees. The district established in 1952 a public health agency that provides mosquito and vector control across Los Angeles County, serving residents in 36 cities and nearby areas, working to prevent disease like West Nile virus and protect public health. The district is governed by a board of trustees made up of representatives from each member city and county. Appointees must be residents and registered voters in their respective jurisdictions and are appointed to serve a two- or four-year term as outlined in state law. Trustees are expected to attend monthly board meetings at the district office in Santa Fe Springs. San Fernando's representative receives $100 monthly travel reimbursement from the district and additionally, a $150 monthly stipend from the city for meetings attended. Tonight's appointment will fill an unscheduled vacancy due to the resignation of former trustee Sylvia Ballin. The new appointee will serve the remainder of her two-year term effective June 17, 2025, through January 6, 2027. Tonight, there are four applicants for consideration. Flor Sanchez, Maria Elizabeth Castaneda, Vladimir Sogomanyan, and Sonia Romero Fuentes. Tonight's process will proceed as follows. Each applicant will provide a two- to three-minute presentation of their background, qualifications, and interest in serving on the board. Once all four applicants' presentations have concluded, there will be an opportunity for the city council to provide comments and ask questions of the applicants. At the conclusion of council member discussion and questions, the voting process will begin. City clerk will call on each council member to announce the name of the applicant they are nominating. The applicant with the most votes, two or more, will be the appointed representative. If there is a tie, only the applicants in the tie will move on to the next round of voting. If an applicant has not been selected after three rounds of voting, the names of the remaining qualified applicants will be randomly drawn to determine the person that will be selected as the representative. This concludes staff's presentation. I am available for questions before the applicants make their presentations.
Does council have any questions?
So, do I understand correctly, we're going, when we vote, if someone has two votes and that's the most, that person becomes a representative?
Yes, that is correct.
And if there is not someone in that, how many times do we do it? Twice? Or was there a certain limit before pulling in the hat?
At the third voting time.
Third?
Yes. Okay, all right, let's begin this process. Flor Sanchez, please step up to the podium and provide your brief presentation.
Can I get a translation for a couple of paragraphs, please?
You want your comments translated into Spanish?
Just a couple of paragraphs.
I think there's already translation provided, so you could speak.
In Spanish, and then they'll translate it, and then in English, that will need a... I would like translation for just two paragraphs since I'm doing it in Spanish, and I would like your translation into English.
Let me see. Councilmember Solario would want to say something?
Yeah, well, just before all of the potential candidates come up, if you can all let us know your availability for vector control and to travel, just because it is a traveling position. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. Good evening, mayor, council members, and community members. Muchas gracias por brindarme la oportunidad de dirigirme a ustedes.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you all.
Mi nombre es Flor Sanchez.
My name is Flor Sanchez.
Es un orgullo para mí servir a San Fernando, mi hogar, y una ciudad que amo profundamente.
It is of great pride for me to be able to serve San Fernando, my home, and a city that I love profoundly.
I currently serve as commissioner for both parks, wellness, and recreation, and planning and preservation. These roles have given me the opportunity to listen to residents, collaborate on community center initiatives, and advocate for healthier, more vibrant public spaces. Joining the vector control board is a natural extension for my current service. Many of the issues we address in our commission meetings, like park improvements, environmental conservation, and public wellness programming, intersect with vector control. Serving on this board would allow me to bring a broader regional understanding of public health threats and environmental risk factors back to our local initiatives. It would also sharpen my ability to ask better questions, more informed questions, when new projects are brought forward, especially those that involve land use, water management, and outdoor recreation. I want to acknowledge the other candidates as well, each of whom bring valuable experience. What sets me apart is that I am not stepping into public service. I'm already deeply engaged in it. I bring with me a strong work ethic, a collaborative and community-focused approach, and the ability to act quickly while remaining open to learning. Also, I understand the rhythm of the city governance and the importance of proactive solutions. Gracias nuevamente por considerar mi soliditud.
Once again, thank you very much for considering my application. Once again, thank you very much for considering my application. Sería un verdadero honor continuar sirviendo a la ciudad de San Fernando en esta nueva capacidad. It would be of great honor to continue to serve the city of San Fernando in this new position.
And as far as your question, Vice Mayor Solario, uh, I'm very fortunate and lucky to be able to say that I work from home. So, um, I do have the possibility of traveling throughout the day, um, any time of the day, of course, with, you know, advance notice. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. The next applicant we have is Maria Elizabeth Castaneda.
Good evening, uh, Mayor Mendoza, Vice Mayor, um, Vice Mayor Solario, and council members. My name is Maria Castaneda and I am here to present my qualification for the Greater Los Angeles County Vector Control District position. I am recently a graduate of the California State University Northridge with a Bachelor's of Science in Public Health. During my studies, I took some courses that taught me valuable information about mosquito awareness and what to look for during the inspections. I also gained knowledge about diseases transmitted through mosquito bites, such as a West Nile virus, Zika, yellow fever, and et cetera. This knowledge is important to ensure that, that the person appointed to this position can effectively communicate this mission and message of the Vector Control District to, uh, the community and also to, uh, all of you. If I am selected and I am considered, my ability to fulfill this responsibility and contribute to the public health forces. Additionally, I have, uh, worked, I have worked experience with the WIC program in the San Fernando Valley, where I served as a supervisor for over 10 years. This role gave me the strong understanding of delegating and how to conduct meetings with upper management. Um, that, that's pretty much it. Thank you so much for your time. And then in terms of, um, hours, well, I'm self-employed, as you guys all know. Awa fresca de bailes. And then, um, traveling, there is no issue in terms of traveling time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Castaneda. Next applicant we have is Vladimir Sogomanyan.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Members of City Council, City Manager, Chief, and Madam City Clerk. It's an honor for me to be here. Thank you for the opportunities to speak with you today. My name is Vlad Sogomanyan, seven-year resident of City of San Fernando, and I'm honored to be considered for the appointment to the Vector Control Board as a trustee representing this wonderful city. I currently serve as an Executive Assistant to City Manager and City Council with the City of Glendale, uh, where I have had the privilege of supporting leadership and engaging closely with a wide range of city operations. In this role, I've developed a strong understanding of municipal processes, interdepartmental collaboration, and the importance of public health and safety. Beyond my professional duties, I proudly serve on the Board of Glendale Management Association, where we work to represent the voices and interests of the management team. I'm also a member of Character and Ethics Project Board, which reflects my deep commitment to integrity, transparency, and ethical leadership in public service. I'm especially drawn to the mission of the Vector Control Board because it combines science, policy, and community engagement to safeguard public health. From mosquito abatement to disease prevention, I understand that this work is often behind the scenes, but it's critical to well-being of every resident in San Fernando. I'm eager to contribute by bringing my organizational skills, my collaborative mindset, and my deep commitment to public service to this important role. I believe that serving on Vector Control Board is not just about oversight, it's about advocacy, education, and proactive action. I'm ready to be thoughtful, informed, and engaged trustee who supports our city and region in staying safe, healthy, and informed. In terms of travel and attending every meeting, I'm, I'm willing to travel and I, I know the meetings take place, uh, one time a month on Thursday, uh, 7:00 PM, so I'm available to attend all of these meetings. Uh, thank you so much for your time and consideration, and I would be honored to serve.
Thank you. The next applicant we have is Sonia Fuentes.
For this opportunity, excuse me, I have, uh, 32 years of experience with the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power, where I started as a customer service representative and moved up the ranks to commercial field supervisor, where I was responsible for the entire Owens Valley, covering 500 square miles. I retired February 2021. I have all the time in the world for the city of San Fernando. You are the only ones that I would be willing to come out of retirement and go and represent you in Santa Fe Springs. I bring a wealth of knowledge in community service, in dealing with vector control, because I have a daughter that actually worked for the Greater Los Angeles County Vector, where she was in a little vehicle and she was out in the entire county of LA, um, adding that liquid that they add to the, to any mosquitoes or any of those, um, uh, critters that may be out there. So it would be an honor to be able to represent my city, where I've lived for over 35 years, um, near Chatsworth and Coronel Street. So thank you so much for this opportunity.
All right, thank you, Ms. Fuentes. Uh, Madam Mayor and Council Members, it is now time for comments and any questions, uh, for the applicants.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember Garcia?
I really wanna emphasize, uh, feeling so humbled that such amazing and qualified applicants have sought this position, that I'm overwhelmed. I don't know how to choose between all of you. Um, and so thank you for, uh, volunteering to serve. It is far in Santa Fe Springs. I don't know, I'm like getting emotional. Um, I think that the only, so just know that it's hard. I mean, it's gonna be a very hard decision, I think, for all of us. I think the only questions that a few of you might have answered is, uh, are you a resident of the city of San Fernando? And then briefly, and again, some of you answered, why do you wanna, why do you want vector control? So for everyone else in the community, this is about mosquitoes and, um, providing information to our community on that topic. So I'd be interested just if you could, um, state whether you're a resident of the city of San Fernando and then why you're interested, if you want to add. I know some of you said that. In 60 seconds.
I guess I'll, I'll go first. Um, yes, I am a resident of the city of San Fernando, have been for the past, I think it's 16 years already. The reason I, I'm interested in this is, well, because I wanna serve my city better. I wanna get to know more what I'm, what I'm doing in the commission. I think it would be a perfect tie-in. But also, um, not that long ago, my neighbor had, um, it was a rental home and they had an empty pool for quite some time. That's when I learned about the importance of that. Uh, so I was, I guess you could say personally affected, and that's when I got to learn what vector was. I didn't even know the word. So, yes, thank you.
Hi, so, um, yes, I've lived in San Fernando for over 20 years. Um, and, um, and I grew up in Pacoimas, was like right next door to us, right? Um, and the reason why I selected the vector control really is just to be more with my community, right? I wanna help as much as I can with my community. As you all may or may know, you know, I'm here, I try to advocate for our community. And so I think this would be in addition to trying to help our community, our community, and educate not only, um, my residents, but also kinda have that, um, that connection with all of you as well. Thank you.
I, I did state that I had been in the city of San Fernando for over 35 years. It's actually the perfect position as a retiree, because you all are asking once a month. So it's, it's not a giant commitment. Um, I can travel. It would be an honor to be able to work, uh, so close with you all. And because I've worked with the city of Los Angeles, now, uh, serving my city, where I've lived for so many years, it would just be awesome to be able to go over there, to Santa Fe Springs, and represent our city. Thank you.
Thank you again for this opportunity, seven-year resident of San Fernando with 12 years of public service background with City of Glendale, and, uh, experience in, experience in policymaking and decision-making. And I would really appreciate the opportunity to serve on this board and get involved in City of San Fernando. This is my first time being in this chamber, so I want to contribute my knowledge, 12 years of knowledge of public service, and bring it to City of San Fernando. Thank you.
Council, Councilmember Lopez?
Well, like, it's really, it's an honor. Really, it's an honor to have you all apply for this position. And yes, I would like to keep, you know, in contact with you, you know, whether you get elected or not, you know, so we can work together to improve our beautiful city of San Fernando. But it's gonna be, uh, difficult, right? But thank you. No questions.
Councilmember Fajardo?
Yes, uh, to each of you, how did you hear about this position? And whom on the council have you spoken to about applying? If anyone, that is.
I'll take the lead again, thank you. Um, yeah, I first heard about it, uh, here in the chamber. Um, there was a council meeting, I believe it was, when it was brought up. And then I asked, um, Mayor Marian Mendoza about it, and then she gave me all the information that I needed to know.
I receive all the emails that the city of San Fernando sends, and it was sent out on an email, and I went ahead and applied. Thank you. I have not spoken with any council member regarding that. Thank you.
So, um, I was also here the day that you guys were kind of going over the, this information in regards to the position. Um, and then, um, I spoke to Nick in regards to this. I kinda wanted to get a little bit more information on it, so he kind of told me, you know, um, where to go and to email him, and he kinda led me to, to where I'm at now. Thank you.
I found out about this opportunity on social media and also I received an email from City of San Fernando, so I actively follow the pages. That's how I informed about, uh, the stuff that's going on in San Fernando. Thank you. And I haven't spoken to any of the council members, only Madam City Clerk. Thank you.
You done?
That's my only question. I might have some comments on why I asked that later, but, um.
Vice Mayor Solario?
Yeah, thank you. I mean, it is such an honor to have all four, four of you here. It is incredible. You all individually have amazing backgrounds and are just so willing to serve our community. So I thank you for coming up here and being so well-prepared. And I wish we had a position actually for each of you. Um, so thank you for that.
Yes, I agree. You know, I mean, this is like a, a difficult decision. You're, you know, your qualifications are just, you know, phenomenal. And, um, I think that after this, I hope that you all continue to be a, a part of our city and part of the decision-making process in anything that we have. Um, I, you know, it's so great to have such, uh, people with, uh, these qualifications in our community and you're valuable assets to anything that we do here in the city. So thank you, um, for coming out. I don't have any additional questions for you. So I guess, uh, the next process, um, Ms. City Clerk?
Yes, uh, Councilmember Fajardo, you have additional comments?
I can make a comment. Uh, it's not really a question, but I was just kinda curious if, uh, anyone had any, or any of the council members had familiarity with any of the applicants. That way you could give me a little bit more insight into why they recommended them. Um, the only one who I personally know is, uh, Flor Sanchez. Um, but, uh, I do like that the second applicant, uh, Ms. Castaneda has taken actually a class related to, um, to mosquitoes, which I think is kind of a rarity. So I would actually be fine, to be honest with you, with any of the four applicants, they're all good. Um, these are the two whose, I think, presentations resonated the most with me. But I was also going to say that my, uh, planning and education, not my planning and education, that's not a, that's not a, a committee, but my, uh, planning commissioner, uh, is planning on retiring. And so that does actually open up another position. And I was curious, Ms. Sanchez, if you don't receive this one, would you be interested in the planning commission?
I would absolutely love it. However, I'm already in it.
Oh, you're already on parks, you're on parks, oh.
I'm both in parks and in planning.
Oh, she's on planning and parks, okay.
That's right.
Well, this will at least give me three people to meet with, uh, in the event, okay. Yeah, so I'm open to honestly, any of the four. But, yeah, I think that, uh, Ms. Sanchez, because I know her, obviously I don't know she's on planning, but I know of her. And, uh, I think that the second one's very interesting simply because she's actually taken a course on mosquitoes, which I think is, uh, is a rare coincidence. But I'm fine with any of the four. All of them seem, you know, perfectly qualified in different ways.
Okay.
Are there any further comments?
I see none.
Okay.
Ready for the vote?
If council has concluded its comments and discussion, the voting process will begin. I will call on each council member to state the name of the applicant they wish to appoint to the Vector Control District Board of Trustees. Councilmember Lopez, please state the name of the applicant you wish to appoint to the Vector Control.
Um, Sonia Romero Fuentes.
Thank you. Councilmember Garcia, please state the name of the applicant you wish to appoint to Vector Control.
Sonia Romero Fuentes.
Councilmember Fajardo, please state the name of the applicant you wish to appoint to the Vector Control.
Can I name all four? I will, can we come back? Yeah. Mayor, can we come back?
Sure.
All right.
Vice Mayor Solario, please state the name of the applicant you wish to appoint to the Vector Control.
Goodness, such a hard decision. You know, I think, I know we're appointing, but it is incredible that, I think, you all have such wonderful backgrounds. I, um, in particular, I'm also just interested in different backgrounds and understanding a little bit more, so I'd like to appoint, uh, Vladimir.
And Mayor Mendoza, please state the name of the applicant you wish to appoint to the Vector Control.
Well, I'm going to continue with, uh, my commissioner Flor, because, um, I know she's very eager to learn and has that, um, you know, that ability to, to hold those various offices, so I'm willing to continue with her.
All right, thank you. And we are back to Councilmember Fajardo. Please state the name of the applicant you wish to appoint to Vector Control.
So I will go with Flor Sanchez, but to reiterate, I am willing to meet with all three of the other people who applied for the, uh, planning commission position.
All right, so it appears that we do have a tie between Flor Sanchez with two votes and Sonia Fuentes with two votes. So we'll move on to vote for either Flor Sanchez or Sonia Fuentes. I will go through each council member. Please state the name of your applicant. Councilmember Lopez?
Sonia, Sonia Romero Fuentes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Sonia Romero Fuentes.
Councilmember Fajardo?
Flor Sanchez.
Vice Mayor Solario?
Well, I hate to be the tiebreaker. Um, I will say, uh, Sonia Romero Fuentes.
Okay, and Mayor Mendoza?
Flor Sanchez.
All right, we have, uh, Sonia Fuentes with three votes. And she is currently the newly-appointed representative to the Vector Control Board. Sonia, would you like to just say a few closing words?
Thank you so much for this opportunity. Um, I do wanna confess that after all the community members speaking, I almost felt embarrassed for applying for a position to represent the city of San Fernando. There's just so much going on right now. But I just, um, I just feel so honored, because, uh, working closely with you all, it's just, it, it's gonna be an amazing opportunity. So, uh, you're not gonna regret my appointment. I, I promise you, I will make you all proud for choosing me. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And staff will be in touch over the next day or two on next steps. Thank you.
Ms. Fuentes, it, it'll be a pleasure to have you represent us on Vector Control. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna take a seven-minute break. Okay, we're gonna take a seven-minute break. Item, item number 12 will be the next item on the, item, 14, sorry. Item number 14 will be the next item. Turn from recess. We will resume from recess. We are now at item number 14. Discussion and consideration regarding immigration and custom enforcement, ICE, and local government response. This item was placed on the agenda by Vice Mayor Solorio. Please provide presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. So I brought, I'm gonna read off the agenda item. I brought this agenda item due to, of course, as we all know, immigration and custom enforcement and everything that is happening within our own city and city of L.A. and across the country. I provided a little bit of background. So in recent weeks, immigration and custom enforcement has intensified raids across Los Angeles County, reportedly targeting communities with high populations of undocumented immigrants. These operations have resulted in the detention of individuals, many who have longstanding community ties, clean records, and U.S. citizen family members. The surge in enforcement has prompted fear, anxiety amongst immigrant populations, especially in neighborhoods whose historically limited access to legal representation and support services. I brought this item because it affects all of us. And I know prior, we were all talking, all the council members, I think we all agree, that something does need to be done, and how we do that, I think, is up into question in what we do as well. I'm glad to hear that everybody is supportive in that, in that way. You know, I talk about my own family, and I imagine how difficult it is to many families nowadays being separated. Again, when I was a child, I had the very wonderful opportunity or privilege that I had family here in the United States that were able to take care of me and my two other siblings growing up for the time that my parents were taken from us. And I can only express sadness and compassion to those individuals that have also been taken from their families. that have also been taken from their families and to those family members that are struggling right now. And we bring this item forward, I think, to just try to do something more for our community. I'm gonna read a quote from Anne Frank's diary. "Our many Jewish friends and acquaintances are being taken away. The Gestapo is treating them very roughly and transporting them in kettle cars to Westbrook, the big camp to which they are sending all Jews. If it goes on, we too should be taken away. I don't know what will happen then." This quote captures the terror and the helplessness experienced when people are forcibly taken from their homes, making it especially poignant for drawing historical perils for humanizing modern immigration discussions. So I brought this forward to our council for further discussion and resources on what our city can do for those impacted during ICE immigration enforcement across our city. Thank you.
Councilmember Farhado.
Yes, I'm open to doing more in any capacity that we can, but I present to staff this question. What more can we do while still abiding by laws and keeping our staff safe? This is either for Mr. Kimball or the chief or both.
Yeah, thanks, Council. Thank you, Councilmember Farhado. I just did wanna sort of just kind of reiterate some of the things that the city council has done because it's been obviously a very priority discussion for council over the past few months. And there was quite a bit of discussion regarding, you know, quote-unquote sanctuary city policies, but ultimately resulted in city council setting, adopting a resolution, setting citywide policy that we don't collect immigration data and information for any city purposes. And we also do not cooperate with immigration enforcement. So that was, and then in addition to that, we were directed to put together an immigration forum, sort of a know your rights, some legal, there was some legal assistance at that particular forum. And the chief actually did, gave a presentation on the, what the city of San Fernando Police Department's policies are. So we're working on actually putting together the video from those two, the know your rights piece and the city policies piece into one sort of coherent video because it was, it was at a couple different spots that those were given during the forum. And then, and then posting it on our website. So, you know, we can make that information available. We've made the red cards available for knowing your rights. So that's some of, some of the, along with doing a lot of training, internal staff training on how to implement the new policy. So all of those are steps that have been taken thus far by this council and by city staff. You know, there, there are some limitations ultimately on what the city as a, you know, as a body can do, mostly because, again, we have to operate within, within the confines of the law. And federal law always supersedes local law. So our, our local laws do not supersede federal law. So, you know, working within those constraints, we've been trying to do what we can to support, you know, support folks. But I think from our standpoint, from those, I'm not saying that's all we could do, but we have done something, some, we have taken some steps and would look to council if there are additional steps, more forums, more education that you would like staff to, to work, work on. I'd like to see if the chief has anything to add on what we, what we can do to what we are already doing.
So, thank you, Nick. Madam Mayor and members of the city council, I, I just wanted to provide a general overview to you and the community with respect to what is, what we have done externally to educate the community as well as what we have done internally to ensure that our police staff are aware of what the expectations are with respect to our department policy and abiding by the California Values Act, SB 54. So let me begin by, by acknowledging that this is a very emotional item, and we understand that there's a lot of fear, anxiety, and uncertainty in the community. And we also understand that there are members of the community who feel disconnected at this time to the rest of the community. So we want to acknowledge that. And we understand that, you know, as a police department, these, these thoughts, these emotions exist. And nevertheless, we are gonna go out there and we are gonna serve everyone. And that's everyone. In regards to answers, we're gonna provide as many answers as we can, but the reality is the police department does not have all the answers. And this is probably gonna be a conversation that is going to lift up other topics that may require political action versus staff action. And as a police department, we will remain apolitical. However, I think the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again and expecting different results. So I think a broader conversation needs to occur with elected officials with respect to how do we move forward. And with that, the police department is placed in a very tough position. And I want to share that several of our San Fernando police officers went to Los Angeles last week and experienced firsthand some of the violence that some protesters engaged in. Some of our officers took rocks, they had rocks thrown at them, water bottles with chemicals thrown at them. And I think it was very telling that for the city of Los Angeles to ask for help from other police departments is indicative of the situation they were facing. And we, as a community, should be proud that although we don't have a thousand officers, we sent what we could to support our, to support our neighbors in Los Angeles. So with that, you know, our police department is prepared and has prepared for any type of incidents that may occur in San Fernando. And lastly, I think it's important to acknowledge that the police department has collaborated with other city departments, including recreation and community services to ensure that the community is aware of their rights and resources available to them. So with that, I'm gonna hand it over to Commander Chieson, who's gonna talk about some of the internal preparations we have made at the police department with respect to immigration enforcement, how we handle things, and also preparing for any type of demonstrations or civil unrest here in San Fernando.
Thank you, Chief. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. I'd like to talk to you about the preparation that's been happening at the police department. More recently, as this became a topic of discussion, we made sure that all personnel within the police department had a refresher on SB 54, the California Values Act. We also ensured that all of our personnel were aware of the policy in place that mirrors the intent of SB 54 in our policy and procedure manual for the police department. On top of that, we've also had different trainings in regard to civil unrest. We've taken stock of what we have and what we can offer to assist in our, not only here in San Fernando, but our area C partners for mutual aid. We've also taken the time to come up with what our deployment would look like for staff if civil unrest or protests do come to San Fernando and what kind of lines in the sand or triggers would have to happen for us to change our staffing levels within the police department. And through all that, we also surveyed, you know, individual officer's response times from home to the station to ensure that we have a good understanding of how long it would take for our staff to get from home to be here at the police department to get deployed further into the city. We have received notice of DHS operations from either social media, members of the community, even people that, from our staff that live in the community. We've taken that information and we have passed that along to the chief to disseminate among city staff and city council where appropriate. There's been a lot of what we call misinformation out there about operations that have been happening or not happening in San Fernando. We tried to, from the police department side, vet that information before we distribute it so that we feel confident that the information that we're gonna pass along through the city manager's office is accurate. We, we keep our distance and we don't assist or engage with DHS through the entirety of any of their processes that they have as well.
So with respect to what we can do as a community, I think it's gonna be very important that we continue to get the word out. I heard, you know, some, some of the members of the audience speak on holding forums and doing more. And we can continue to do that in partnership with our community, our Recreation and Community Services Department. But I also want to share with the community that at our parent academy, held at the middle school, we specifically spoke on the subject of immigration, again, to educate our parents in the school community about not only what is going on, but what some of their rights are and is, and also resources available to them. We have visited, I believe it was San Fernando Elementary and spoke to parents there. And these conversations many times take place in Spanish. I speak to the parents and I speak to them in Spanish. Councilmember Lopez recently facilitated a meeting with local business community members here in San Fernando, and that conversation also took place in Spanish. So with respect to using the police department as an arm to try and educate our community, the city is doing that. We can continue doing that. But as I mentioned before, I, I believe this issue is going to be an issue that's gonna be, that's gonna need to be solved at a much higher level. We will continue doing our part to educate, but I think there's a discussion that needs to happen at the federal level with respect to how do we address this problem or this challenge moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. While if there are specific proposals by the city council, I would be interested in hearing them so I know exactly what we're voting on. But I think that we all share a broad sentiment of making sure that people's rights are respected, that we are not acting as law enforcement, oh, sorry, as a federal agent since we have so many local issues. And I think we're united on that. But I do want to learn more about any specific proposals for anything new that we haven't done yet.
Councilmember Lopez.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. On this specific issue, I feel like we can do more. And you're right, Chief, we had to stand in the political side at this point. I, I believe, you know, what happened to Senator Alex Padilla really required us to do our duty and stand for what is right. Imagine if you, they treat one electoral official that way, how would they have been treating our community? And I feel like, like a council, we had to call for action. I was so happy to see the mayor from Los Angeles. You know, she brought all that, all the other elector officials, the community and the community of faith to have a press conference. You know, hopefully in the near future, we can do something like that when some of our electoral officials be treated that way. I can't believe it, you know? He's in the federal level and be treated that way. And he's one of the people will be, you know, representing us in the immigration issues. I know maybe my comments will not be well-taken for all their friends that I have and the other side, but this is not, this is not new. Since I've been advocating for the community, I always stand for the immigrants, and I will continue on this path. I feel like we had to send a letter to the president. We had to send a letter to the Supreme Court to protect our rights and advocate, you know, really advocate on, on this issue. You know, like, my heart is being broke because I see the families, my neighbors, my friends. You know, this is not acceptable. If we continue to be silent, we're gonna be part of the injustice. I believe we'll ask my, my colleagues here to bring more resource. I'm being advocated for in the Mexico Council. You know, they have a wonderful program, so maybe we can bring other councils aboard. I know they have a new ad, the Council App, Contigo. You can go and Google that part, and that will help that immigrant community to put that info in there in case they've been retained. At least it's gonna be easy for the families to find where, where they are and they can bring legal support. I believe it was a letter, Council Vice Mayor, did we present the letter?
Yes, we did. And I think that in terms of like when we spoke with Kanika. Yeah, so we were working on a letter to, but I believe, I don't know, Kanika, can you speak on? Is that the same letter that you drafted for all city council or are this two different ones?
That's correct. That's a statement that's presented, council.
Is anyway, can you read it? Oh, it's already, well, just because we're not gonna prove it yet. We just saw that.
Right, so I guess what Councilmember Lopez is referring to is if we could read out the letter for possible approval, whether that is tonight or just to have that open during open session to discuss it further.
The reason that I asked this because I want to make sure that the public knows that we're working on some actions. It might gonna, we might not vote because maybe not all the council be aware in the specific of this letter, but it's something that was, was, tried to send it.
Is that the letter that was emailed to us?
Yeah, yeah, sorry, Mayor. Yes, it was, it was emailed as a draft. It wasn't ready to put to sort of a public review. So I think we prefer not to have a public review tonight just because it has not been able to be commented on by council members before.
Right, so we're gonna, we're gonna respond through our email.
So, yeah, we, I think the response is simply, we are, we're, staff is working with council to draft the letter that, that talks about both the existing condition of ICE and DHS raids as well as potentially, you know, what, what the incident that occurred with Senator Padilla.
Yes.
Mayor, may, I, I will say a few words in Spanish. Para todas, para todas.
But you'll have to, we need to have it translated because a lot of people, but a lot of people want to have your, they want you to speak and then they want to translate it right away from the translator.
Okay.
For the city clerks, a minute as well. Thank you.
Okay, wow. Lo que quería decirles a todos los residentes que están en sus casas, especialmente a las familias de San Fernando y del Valle de San Fernando. I would like to share with all the people that are in their homes, especially the families that reside in the city of San Fernando.
Los estamos mirando, los estamos escuchando, y vamos a tener nuestro trabajo, ¿verdad? No es nada fácil, pero vamos a pararnos por ustedes. Solamente confíen en nosotros.
We hear you, we see you, we are part of what you're fighting for, just trust us.
También les quiero pedir que no tengan violencia con la policía.
I also want to ask you not to show any violence against the police.
Y también con los otros partidos políticos.
And also with all the other political parties.
Porque divididos, no vamos a llegar a ningún lado.
Because we will not go anywhere if we are divided.
En este momento necesitamos personas.
In this moment, we need people.
Que puedan cruzar la línea.
That could cross over the line.
Y puedan hablar con los republicanos.
And could speak with Republicans.
No es porque tengan la filosofía como nosotros.
Not because they have the same philosophy as us.
Pero con respeto.
But with respect.
Empatía.
Empathy.
Y nuestra conducta tiene que dejar muy en alto a esos trabajadores que están trabajando y son inocentes.
And our behavior has to leave it very clear that the people who are working are innocent people.
Los criminales no se van a estar manifestando, no tienen tiempo porque están trabajando dos o tres trabajos.
Criminals will not be manifesting or protesting. They don't have time because they care, they do two or three jobs a day.
Vamos a trabajar en una, en políticamente en lo que podamos hacer nosotros desde el nivel local.
So we're gonna work from a local level politically for whatever we can do.
Y vamos a apoyar a nuestros representantes, en este caso, el senador Alex Padilla.
And we are going to support our representatives in this case, Senator Alex Padilla.
Aunque no es, no es, no es algo raro, ¿verdad? Hemos tenido nuestras diferencias políticamente.
Even though this isn't something rare, we've had differences politically.
Muchas veces yo he estado en la posición de él.
I have myself been in his position many times.
Cuando muchos empleados han tratado de estimarme como una persona que fui elegida.
When employees have tried to esteem me or underestimate me as a person who has been elected.
Pero eso no me quita mi de seguir trabajando.
But that doesn't take away from me wanting to continue working.
Incluso con mis colegas aquí.
Even here with my colleagues.
Estoy trabajando con ellos para explicarles porque tal vez ellos no tienen, no, no han tenido las experiencias como inmigrantes que nosotros hemos tenido.
I'm working with them to explain to them because maybe they haven't had the experiences that we have had because maybe they're not immigrants like we have been.
Y si estamos peleando con ellos o los estamos intimidando o estamos haciendo algo en contra de ellos, no vamos a tener el apoyo que necesitamos.
And if we are fighting against them or intimidating them or doing anything against them, we're not going to receive the support that we're asking for.
Odio no trae, no trae nada bueno. No vamos a pelear odio con odio.
Hate brings nothing good. You don't fight hate with hate.
Nos solamente les pido que tengan paciencia. Estamos trabajando al nivel local, estatal y federal.
So I just ask you to be patient because we are working at the local, federal and state levels.
Y mis colegas aquí.
And all my colleagues here.
Van a hacer lo que ellos piensen que es lo mejor para proteger a las familias inmigrantes y a todos los residentes de San Fernando.
Will do whatever they believe is best to protect all the immigrant families and all of the people from San Fernando.
Thank you, Mayor.
Gracias.
Does anyone else have anything else they'd like to add? Vice Mayor?
You guys are, oh, just gonna say.
You'd like to add something? Vice?
To herp or just to the topic? Okay. So, yeah, I just wanted to thank everyone for their comments on this issue. I actually wanted to thank Councilmember Fajardo for your insight, for making a vote to protect our residents but not leaving it there, for coming back with a resolution to further clarify the city's policies regarding not cooperating in immigration operations so that it would be clear to all of our staff, our residents and visitors. I also wanted to recognize the heart of our mayor. I have seen Mayor Mendoza appear with tears in her eyes as she recalled the immigration raids of the 1980s, a time I can't recall because I was born that decade. I think a couple of my colleagues were too. But I've seen her grapple with how to best protect our residents. And I hope you will forgive me for saying this, but I know she has grappled since because while her heart was pure and her intention was to protect our community, in some circles, some of our intentions were questioned. And so we come to the question that I've been asking, and I think my colleagues have been asking, what can we do? So I wanted to say I have attended some regional forums almost on this topic. After the raids of Paramount, the California Contract Cities Association, so the president is actually the vice mayor of Paramount, and they had a conference call. I don't know if it was a Zoom or a conference call with the LA County Sheriff, Luna. And with very little notice, our mayor attended, our chief of police attended. And we learned what was happening on a broader, a broader level. So I'm going to share with the community some things I have learned from that and from another forum. I don't want to give people any fear, but it's information that was told, 200 people attended that call and then another one, almost 500 people attended. But we were informed that President Trump has actually polled from LA County, FBI, DEA, what's the other one with the arms, with the guns, agency?
Marines?
ATF essentially polled all of those agents into the immigration operations. And that it's not clear that it's going to end in a month or two months. So that, that has been activated. So that was like a shocking warning. We were also, I wanted to clarify that, you know, our police chief talked about our four of our officers going to the protests in downtown LA. And I wanted to clarify that when our police officers respond. So it's not in regards to protest and I'll ask our chief to clarify. And I, I like support the right to protest. That's number, First Amendment. So it is not to quell that, to quash that. It is literally only when it becomes violent. And we don't really have the option to not respond to that. And so that's what Sheriff Luna was saying too. He was saying, once sheriff deputies are attacked, everyone is activated. And once law enforcement is attacked in one region, the entire region is activated. So that is just information for our community. It is, we are not activated to deal with stopping protests and we are not activated to deal with immigration efforts, only with crimes. So I wanted to clarify that because that's the world we're living in. And that is, that is something we don't have control over. And I also wanted to clarify, I don't know, there was a reel that went viral with the LA City Council member asking the Los Angeles Police Department, why don't you tell us when ICE is coming to our community? And he said, you're asking me to tell you when another law enforcement agency is going to operate? And she said, yes. And he said, that would be obstruction of justice. I suggest you speak to your city attorney about that. And when that's done on the federal level, that becomes a federal felony. So those are some of our restrictions, but it doesn't stop us from asking what can we do? We're not going to stop there and say, we can't, I want to make it clear because some people are saying, well, be a saint, like if we have the title sanctuary city, it will stop federal agents from coming in. And I want, I just want people to know that's not true so that, I never want to give people a false hope or a false sense of security. There's a suggestion, well, can't we bring everyone into our city buildings and tell them they can't come in? And I spoke to the police chief about that and he said something that did make the hair on my arms stand up. He said, how, that's almost like corralling them into a space. And should ICE come in and deport them all? That would be horrific. So I just want to be clear, if they have a warrant, and I want to ask the chief so that, because you're law enforcement. My understanding is if they have a warrant, a signed warrant, they can go in to whatever that property is, whether it's our city facility or private property. Is that correct?
That is correct. So when a law enforcement officer or a federal law enforcement officer has a warrant signed by a judge, those officers can go into whatever is outlined in the warrant and nobody can stop them.
Okay, and I know I've seen like in the movies or I've heard, I've seen like them breaking doors down, presumably like if they have a warrant and it, and that's why I've seen a lot of know your rights, like you don't have to open the door if there's not a warrant. But I think if you don't open the door and there is a warrant, can they enter?
And that is correct, yes. It is a court order. It is a judge saying that the officers are entitled to enter the premises and they could forcibly enter it if necessary.
Okay, so I did, so that is, I just wanted to outline that because I don't want to give false hope. I also don't want to leave it there. So just in some ideas that I had, and I also, I wanted, sometimes I ask, can I share this? If I can share the information about ICE being in the community, you know, if we can share it, we will share it. If we cannot, honestly, we're not even given the information. I think that ICE is not giving us too much information in LA County. So we're not like sitting on info about them being here. We don't even often know until often the community knows. But as far as ideas, I was thinking, okay, so I, we have the know your rights cards. Is that correct, Mr. Kimball?
That is correct. I believe we need to print out more of them because we've distributed all of them, but we can print out more.
Okay, so we have know your rights cards, English, Spanish. We've given out hundreds and we're going to give more. We did the forum and I thank you, I'm glad to hear that we're gonna make that available more readily on, maybe on, can we do that, can we put it on social, Facebook or social media, our website even about that? And I was thinking we can even do another one that is just directed toward, I don't know that, how much of it was the consultations where we provided free counsel from Mexican American Bar Association. But if there's, if we feel that that's lacking, we can do another one and have that put on our website. That was another idea I had. Can you tell me, I know there was a question about trainings, but have we trained our police officers, our city staff about, about our policy and what we can, what we cannot do and where the line is there? Because we don't, we don't cooperate. So is all of our staff up to date on that?
That is correct. Our police department staff recently went through a training. In addition to that, the police department has led or facilitated training with other, with other city departments as well. And so, yes, we have, we have done that.
Okay, and then to our chief, thank you for sharing with the going out. I know you've talked at Neighborhood Watch, Business Watch, parent academies and even in homes, I heard. So are you willing to continue to do that as, if we can provide that?
Absolutely. My only ask is that any community member that's interested, reach out to my office. I would like to have as many as possible, obviously, to get the word out. And we can, definitely, I will do it personally in Spanish. And the goal here is to empower and educate.
Okay, great. And then, so another idea, because I've been talking with staff and I have been talking with our chief, I mean, if this is an issue that we need to address on the federal level, well, you know, we always hear that your budget is not a financial document, it's a values document. So we could allocate money toward, we could make that a legislative priority for the council. And I have some ideas of where we might find some money. We can, we can lobby federal representatives. I know that President Reagan did an amnesty bill and just, and transformed things, like my in-laws love him because so many of them came in the 80s through that amnesty program. So that would be a solution to some things, but we would have to turn representatives who are not right now poised to vote that way. So if we want to explore that, how can we speak to them? How can we, you know, one thing I think is very powerful is stories to the, I don't know, I'm throwing out ideas because I don't think any of us know what we can do, but if we collected stories while protecting people and shared that with others who might be sympathetic, it might turn hearts and minds. And I have some more ideas in the budget, but those are just some things that come to mind. I don't, I think if we had a solution like the state of California would have solved the problem and, and we're all kind of in the same boat of saying, what can we do? But we can take steps and we can work on, work on some of those ideas and assign funding to it and to make something happen. Thank you.
You know, I just wanted to add that, you know, the job of our police department is to protect, one of the, you know, that's their first calling is to protect and to serve and to protect property. That's why they're called out. That's what they're called out to do when they're out there. And, and in terms of the federal government, they cannot impede the federal government from doing their job. They cannot stop them from doing, going out and doing their raids in any way. That, that's right, Chief, right?
That is correct. We cannot obstruct, impede, delay federal law enforcement officers when they are doing their respective jobs.
So, you know, you know, I'm a supporter of our immigrants. I've never, you know, I mean, the city of San Fernando has always supported the immigrants. I think one of the ways that, one of the things that we can focus on is immigration reform, you know, continue, we can continue with the immigration forums, maybe on Zoom because the last one we had, we only had 13 persons participate. So maybe Zoom would be the better way where they don't have to leave their homes if leaving their home is a concern. Maybe we can work something like that. And maybe just have, maybe a focus group on it where they, they just have a regular meeting and they can share things and maybe something with our mental health as well to help them. We do have, do we have any of our mental health funding, Mr. Kimball, that can, can assist with that?
We can, we can look into that, what those eligible expenditures.
That's a big concern. I think a lot of, you know, the children are dealing with that, the families, the parents don't know how to deal with their, their children and not having one of the parents in the home. I find that extremely sad, having to watch some of those things that are happening. That's one of the saddest things. I've been watching a lot of the, I've been, you know, we get invited as council or electeds to a lot of forums that are presentations that are given, being given on, on this immigration issue. And I recently did one this past Friday and it was called the Civil Rights and Know Your Rights Virtual with Mayor Bass, regional mayors and local electeds, with Mark Rosenbaum. And he's, Mark Rosenbaum is an attorney on civil rights and for local leaders. And he was, he's quite excellent. You might want to look him, look him up, Mark Rosenbaum. And they have a public council, so let's say you are, you do have your documents and your, and your, I guess, they have you on hold, then you say you need a public counsel and they will send someone out to you. And they will send a, an attorney to go and then they have to hold you there till your attorney arrives. And they have many attorneys and they'll send them out as soon as possible, but you let them know that you have one. And if you have, I guess you were going through a process, it appears to me, that was my understanding. But that is something that you can do. And the, I did pass that, the presentation, the PowerPoint presentation to council members. I sent that into staff and they provided quite a bit of important information and some links which I will forward to, to staff to post on our city website as well. He focused on civil rights and social justice. But I think that, you know, I think maybe one of the quickest things that we can do is maybe, is have the mental health. I think that's something that's very important. And then do more of know your rights and partner with. And then do more of your, know your rights and, uh, partner with, uh, uh, our Congresswoman and. Our Senator and Assemblywoman to see what workshops they're having and, and forward those to, to our residents. Maybe through emails or whatever is our quickest way to get the information to them. If it's, uh, you know, we don't have anything in place, but sharing what they're doing as well. So, anyone else, Vice Mayor?
Thank you for that discussion, um, and there's a few more things that I want to talk about and ask questions about. Um, let's see, where do I start, so, um, I'm glad that we're clarifying a little bit about what our police department can and cannot do. Um, I'm always a proponent of us, uh, working together with our community and as, um. I would say probably ninety-nine point nine percent of our community loves our police department and our police department definitely loves the community back. And so, um, I'm glad that our chief and our commander are here to speak on how we can work together and have, um. Peaceful protests and how do we support one another, um, even though, um, like, as we say, right, our police department does not assist with ICE. But we, um, do assist with peaceful protest and maintaining order in our city and making sure that everyone remains safe. Um, I would like to know if, um, our city could promote something, um, like peaceful protesting and what that looks like. Um, as some of you may be familiar, like the Caesar Chavez March, um, assigns peacekeepers. And peacekeepers are basically people that are put in the front, in the back and on the side of a protest to ensure the safety of the protesters. Whether that is, um, to maintain on the sidewalk, to, uh, maintain their composure, to ensure that they are there. Um, to speak on their action item, but as well to not, um, disturb the peace across, right? Um, so I think earlier in our earlier session, an earlier meeting, we discussed, um, identifying. The police versus identifying ICE and how individuals have possibly confused that. And how do we inform our community to know what the San Fernando Police Patch looks like and who's a police officer? So I'd like to know, um, if you could provide any, uh, comment, uh, Mr. Kimball or anyone else to see if we can, how do we? Move that forward, whether it's a post or we're sending out an email, um, to outline peaceful protest and promoting. What our poli, or differentiating what our police officers look like, um, not only our police officers in uniform, but those police officers that are not in uniform.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor, um, are you, are, are you, um, asking about, for the, with regards to the peaceful protest on. What a peaceful protest looks like or encouraging peace, people to protest?
A little bit, not encouraging people to protest and not denying their right, but, um, identifying what that might look like and how. Uh, that might look like in San Fernando, right, we're a very small city, um, so maybe understanding even the borders of San Fernando and how far they go.
Um, yeah, I mean, I guess the, the messaging, I, I would just want to be careful on that messaging, right? I mean, ultimately, I think, uh, everyone's, we, we support people's right to protest, um. But that's something that is best done as a grassroots organization than through, I think through a city organized because, just because our, our purpose. But ultimately, you know, there are guidelines, stay on sidewalks, right, stay in, in protected areas. Um, so I think some of those can, we could certainly have guidelines that, that will keep a, uh, any protest safe and peaceful. Um, again, being on, staying on sidewalks, um, you know, not interfering with traffic, those types of things. I think we could certainly have, uh, sort of best practices from that standpoint, that will keep the, you know. You, then you won't have to worry about the police coming, but you'll be able to get, you know, get your word out and your message and, and, and get as many supporters as you'd like with regards to that. And then, as, as far as how to identify, um, San Fernando Police Officers, uh, you know, both of our, our, uh, our chief and commander. Um, have the, the San Fernando Police Patch, um, and so I think there might be a few things that we can, uh, we can post. Particularly on the San Fernando Police, um, social media that has, uh, that sort of has what a, you know, sort of our officer's equipment. You know, what, what the, uh, what it'll say on different areas, uh, and what they have, um, on their uniform. Looks like the chief wants to use, uh, Sergeant Dominguez as a model.
I, I, I just wanted to, uh, let the community know that this is the traditional police uniform, the uniform that, uh, the commander and I have on. And this is more of a utility type uniform that our patrol officers normally wear. And the biggest difference is the exterior vest, but you'll notice that on, all three uniforms, you see the San Fernando Patch. And, um, although this is a little more. So, you, you will, you will.
Julia's gonna move the camera.
There you go, you will see that, uh, he has the San Fernando Patch similar to the patch that, uh, the commander and I am wearing. Uh, you see that his vest says police on the back, we know that, uh, some Department of Homeland Security. Officers do also wear a police on their vest, but the, the biggest identifier is the San Fernando Police Patch. Now, in addition to that, police officers, San Fernando Police Officers' policy are required to have their police ID. Within its arm reach or with them, so they can show that they are San Fernando Police Officers.
I just had a question, uh, would it also be true that San Fernando Police Officers do not wa, go around with face coverings on their face either?
That is correct, I, I will tell you that as the chief of police, I don't even like mirrored glasses on the officers because I think eye contact is really important. They can wear sunglasses, but the reflective mirrored glasses, uh, I don't like it and plus it, it's in our policy. And, um, I think it's important for the officers to be identifiable if necessary. You'll also see that our police officers have a body worn camera on their vest and that's what the body worn camera looks like. And department policy is that, uh, field officers and detectives will have those on them and activated. When they are interacting with the community, and again, these are all things individual to San Fernando Police Officers. Other police departments have similar policies and such, but I want to make it very clear, but that this is our uniform. And we are readily identifiable, uh, identifiable now, we may have detectives who wear, um. Different types of clothing, maybe a shirt and a tie or maybe a collared shirt, but even with them, they will have a badge. Can we see your badge, they will have a badge, either a cloth badge or this metal badge. I see it right here, metal badge that says, San Fernando Police. So police officers are required to have a badge as well as identification. And so, you will not find a San Fernando Police Officer wearing a mask.
And I'm sorry for, for, I just wanted to make clear, uh, I have noticed that a lot of Department of Homeland and, and security personnel will act. When I say face covering, I mean, they will actually have like a bandana or some sort of covering mask over their face. It, that is not the policy of the San Fernando Police Department to have officers walking around with face coverings like that.
They will, they will not have any face coverings on, on, on their face.
Uh, you know, uh, when I, uh, participated in that, uh, workshop, what they were saying is that. Any of the other federal departments cannot wear anything that just says police, that they had to have their identifying, um, agency that they were from. That they were, they had to have it on their uniform and that they were also required to pre. If you ask them for their ID, that they were required to present their id, identification. But it doesn't, from what I've seen, you know, in the videos, it doesn't appear that they're giving anyone an ID. But, uh, that's what they, they stated in that presentation, just wanted to say that.
Okay.
Thank you, um, and Chief, um, can you talk a little bit about, uh, officers out of uniform when they are working?
Yes, so normally if a police officer is working either an undercover detail. Or they're working in the detective bureau, they have a modified uniform, so if they're working undercover, they're buying drugs. They're, they're in places where they need to conceal their identity, they will, um, wear whatever style of clothing. Will allow them to conceal themselves, but even then, there will be police officers in the area to ensure their safety. And should push come to shove, they could readily identify that undercover officer or provide them protection. So, um, there are mechanisms and things that we have in place to ensure that. An undercover officer is not working by themselves, there's always, uh, eyes or monitoring. And there's somebody usually in uniform who is available should that officer need help. Um, with respect to detectives, you will normally, they should be well dressed. And have a, a handgun on one of their, either the left side or the right side with a badge, that San Fernando Police Badge on their belt. Or maybe hanging from a lanyard on their chest, um, identifying them as San Fernando Police Officers.
Thank you, and I, I, um, I'm glad that we are able to make that distinction, just because sometimes I think, um. ICE, uh, ICE will wear something more casual or, um, more official in the sense that like a, a suit or something. And that might be different for our residents to see our police officers on there, but they can definitely look for either a lanyard. Or a, um, a badge that identifies them as San Fernando Police.
Absolutely, and if a resident or somebody and, and I, I. I encourage this, if you have any questions, call the police station and ask, is officer so-and-so work for you? Or ask the officer, can I see your supervisor, I want to speak to your supervisor. If there's any questions as to the purpose or the intent of the contact and a supervisor will come out. It, it, it's, it's, it's okay to ask.
Thank you, Chief, yeah, I, I think it's just like, um, here in San Fernando, we definitely want to collaborate with our residents and work together. To, in harmony, I think, to protect everyone and keep everyone safe, so I appreciate of all those comments. Um, and then just to add to the guidelines for, or best practices, uh, Mr. Kimball. Would we also be able to add on there, um, how to, or I guess how not to respond to agitators or what to possibly do? Because in a lot of these, um, protests, we do see, um, people coming out to agitate. Um, even the protests that we've had previously here in San Fernando, so we want to make sure that we are, um. Speaking to our residents, um, and informing them of like a best practice to respond to agitators.
Yeah, if we, if, if council, um, you know, gives us direction, we could certainly, that's what, one of the things that Ms. Kith was just talking to me about is. We could potentially do like a, a little video on how to protest peacefully and then, and then include in something like that. Sort of look out for, you know, these types of, um, actor, you know, these types of activities that might, might indicate someone that's. They're agitate as opposed to pro, you know, um, express themselves, so we could do, we could look at doing, um, you know, a video that sort of has that. We've done little, little PSAs, uh, public service announcement type videos that just kind of incorporates both. Sort of what are, you know, how to protest peacefully and then how to, um, you know, how to identify agitators. You know, if, if they want to report an agitator during a protest, you know, how you would do that.
Thank you, um, and I'm gonna move on to other questions, uh, so, uh, for your know your rights material, where would they be located and when can they access them?
So those red cards have been available, um, they were, I don't know if there's any still in the back, but we had some in the back table here. We had some at our BCRC and we had some at Las Palmas and, uh, Rec Park, our community centers. So we will, um, again, they're, they're small little cards and we, we ran off quite a few. Um, wherever we don't still have, uh, a supply, we can run off some more. Very low and minimal cost, de minimis cost, so, um, again, they'll be available at Rec, at our community centers, Recreation Park. Uh, Las Palmas Park and then the, um, Business Community Resource Center here at City Hall.
Thank you, and then for more information, um, can you just provide, what is the current status of our staff training on ICE authority or if they come in?
Uh, I believe the, the chief mentioned earlier that all of our, um, employees have been, um. With af, right, right subsequent to the council, uh, passing that resolution and giving, um, that expanded the policy for use of city property. And directed staff as part of that to provide training, um, the chief and, and his team trained all of our, uh, all of our full-time employees. On, uh, what to do in the event, you know, um, ICE or any, there's any safety issues at any of the parks, but that included, um, in ICE or, or DHS visiting one of our parks.
Thank you, um, let me see, and then I guess this question might go back to, um, our police department. Um, do we currently have a response for collaboration if ICE enters schools or attempts to enter schools here in San Fernando with LAUSD?
No, we do not collaborate and my understanding is that, uh, the superintendent of LAUSD. Has given instructions to LA School Police with respect to, um, ICE showing up to, um, s, on, on school property. And we have not been reached out to regarding that.
Okay. Do you think that then it's, I guess on our directive for us to reach out to them, given that we have some schools that will be participating in summer programs? Um, in the next couple of weeks here in San Fernando?
Well, it, it, as, as law enforcement agencies, we want to be, uh, mindful and respectful of boundaries and policies. Uh, we, we have an understanding with LA School Police of if they require our, our assistance, we'll respond. However, they will, they are responsible for security on campus. Um, we can definitely talk to them, but again, they may have instructions that may not align with. Our policies and procedures, so, uh, we will always be there to support our law enforcement, uh, allies. But we also want to be mindful that our policies don't conflict or the expectations of one another. Is, 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 uh, different to a degree that it makes it difficult to work together.
Thank you for clarifying, and, um, back to the city manager, when will the video, uh, know your rights, uh, be available? The one that, um, that was taken during the, um, sorry, um, at, at, uh, Rec Park.
Yeah, uh, I believe it will be within the next two weeks, um, I know we're working on, we're working on it this week, but it's a shorter week due to the holidays. So, um, we'll try to get it by next week.
Okay. Um, and so in response to, um, ICE raids, I know, I don't know if any of the council members or anybody in the public has been able to go out. Um, to the swap meet and I know our police department is at the swap meet on the weekends, uh, when, when it's open. And, um, the dynamic of the swap meet has definitely changed in terms of like who is there. Um, so I'm wondering what happens if there is an ICE sweep at our local swap meet?
So I just want to ask, when you say what happens, like what is the police department's role, what, uh?
What is our local response, yes?
Okay, so if ICE were to show up at the, at the swap meet or any other place where there's a gathering. Our response would be to, to basically observe, we have to be mindful that we can obstruct, impede, delay. Or even, um, assist with people getting away, we would take a secondary role. Um, provide, the officer on scene would provide, um, information to Commander Chason. And then we would prepare ourselves for any potential, um, I won't call it backlash, but any potential, uh, conflict between. Um, the ICE agents and, you know, a crowd that may gather. And, and the goal there would to be maintain order and peace, and I think that's a missing, that's a missing piece that we're, we're not really, or we haven't really addressed. Is the business owners who have their businesses vandalized, um, a lot of them lose not just money, but time and it scars them as well. So, you know, as a police department, we're responsible to ensure that order and, and peace is maintained. And that will be, that would be our goal in, in, in that situation, is to ensure that order and p, peace are maintained. And that property is preserved and that, um. the incident is de-escalated, um, as, as best that we can de-escalate it.
Thank you, Chief, and I ask those questions for informational purposes. I think that a lot of our community does, um, wants to know more information of like what happens, what can we do, what can we not do? But I think it's good to let the community know where we are and what we want to do or what we want to happen. So I ask those questions for information purposes, thank you. Um, in terms of, um, resources that the city can provide, I'm wondering, um, does staff have any suggestions as to what the city can provide, um, to those families that are impacted by ICE? Meaning the removal of maybe a family member that is the main wage earner, um, and they might be detained. And basically, how do we help those families? How can we help those families?
Um, so the, you know, primary role of, of, of most city governments is kind of public safety and, and maintaining of the public right of way, streets, sidewalks and, and that type of thing. So, um, a lot of social service type of, uh, so, social services and social service support are provided through the county and state level, that's sort of the role of, of those, those levels of government. So, which is why we created the BCRC, which is to connect, because we don't provide social services, but we can connect folks to resources. Um, so I would encourage anyone that may have, um, been impacted in any way uh, to visit our Business and Community Resource Center in City Hall. Um, there may be, they, they do, they are started working on gathering different immigration-related resources that, that we could, um, refer and connect people to. So, again, I would just recommend if they want to engage the city on that, then come to the, uh, Business and Community Resource Center at City Hall.
Thank you, um, so, does anybody have any further, um, discussion? No, okay, um, so I guess for this, uh, for this item, what I would like to move forward as an action item for here is, um, on, on the discussion and direction recommended, at the bottom I did put coordinate with County and Legal Aid, uh, Network. So I want to make sure that we're creating a rapid response team, um, in order to alert the public, whether that's like via our social media, whether it's a text message or an email, um, on, um, how they can, how they can get legal aid, um, if some, someone in their family does, you know, um, become detained. Um, I would also like to put forward that, um, we, uh, set up guidelines for best practices or response to agitators and as well as identifying our police department versus ICE. And then for, um, a future action item that I would like to, um, that I would like to do for the following meeting is to appropriate funds, given that we are, um, discussing the budget and, um, other cities, you know, during the time of fires have provided funds for, um, those victims of fire, um, their house burning down, so on and so forth. So aid, um, I would like to, um, appropriate funds, um, for impacted families uh, in, that live in San Fernando, as well as discussing and bringing back information for mun- municipal ID cards. So like the city of San Francisco, um, did municipal ID cards, which are local IDs, right, they're not your ID from the DMV, but they are IDs for people to be able to have their name, their, uh, picture, um, to be able to access city services or to be able to open up a bank account. So I'd like more information on that and how we can move that item forward. Um, and those are the two that I'm proposing, obviously, the one for this council meeting and then for the one for the future council meeting. Uh, Mr. Richard, um, did I miss anything on how to move those two forward?
Anything in your packet that was using the active, active action word? I think there was one item that did have coordinate and I think that was your requested action item for tonight. I, I didn't, I confess I didn't get the full list of items on there, but perhaps City Manager did.
Thank you. Nick, do you need anything further from the council?
Uh, yeah, I think I would just want to make sure, I don't, I want to make sure there's consensus on all of those items. So maybe, I don't know if there needs to be a motion.
Let them repeat it again, please.
Can you repeat it, Nick?
Yes, so I have, um, create a rapid response team, which, um, I would want to get a little more information on what, if that's hiring new staff or if that's, uh, so I'd want to get a little more information on what that means. Um, set up guidelines for best practices or, or, or a video, so, uh, create a video for guidelines for best practices for safe protesting, um, agitate, uh, how to identify agitators and how to identify a San Fernando Police Officer. Um, appropriating funds for impacted families that live in San Fernando and then information on municipal ID cards, um, to receive services. I may have missed one.
If I'm not mistaken, uh, the, the last two are for, for future agenda, agendizing for consideration, not for action tonight.
Correct. And just to, I think, uh, clarify on the rapid response, uh, what I mean by that is like, how do we create, I guess, uh, text message alerts, uh, social media via email, um, to basically provide real-time updates of legal referrals, uh, to people or, uh, Know Your Rights, um, partnerships, uh, with nonprofits to educate, uh, immigrants or individuals, uh, during ICE raids.
I have a question, I know that two of the items were for future agenda item. When do we anticipate those coming back? Obviously, it's, it's ideal to talk about them when we're discussing the budget, but that doesn't prevent us from discussing them at a separate time. I'm just kind of curious what the timeline is.
Well, my perspective, if it can move forward today, that would be great, um, if I have the support of the council.
I mean, you can discuss it during the budget, you can discuss it as an enhancement request or in the budget discussion, that's, that's.
Assuming the budget passes tonight, it's already, uh,
Or, or whenever, you know, whenever we have that, but that could be an enhancement item. That can be added by, you know, for, so, I don't know that it necessarily needs support to add that. Um, we, you could, we could add that as a, one of the enhancement items and then, you know, uh, when we discuss the budget, council can decide on whether or not to, uh, you know, apply funding to that.
Off the top of my head, I think that the municipal ID card seems like a huge undertaking and obviously I don't know much about it, it's my first time hearing about it. But it seems like a, a large-scale undertaking for something that I feel that we already do, which is provide people services irrespective of immigration status. But I don't know enough about how the banking aspect works and what other mechanisms there are to open a bank account. So I suppose I'm open to it, but that one seems like a hu- huge undertaking. The one with regards to assisting families in need, um, I'm at least open to hearing about it. I mean, there's many ways that we assist families in need, so I'm at least open to, to discussing it and seeing what the criteria are and what it entails. But those are my thoughts. As far as the rapid response, I'm open to that too, but a lot of that seemed to me that it would just be additional information as opposed to a, a rapid response. Like when I think of rapid res- and again, maybe I'm just misunderstanding it, um, I'm certainly open to it though. So those are just my thoughts on the different items.
Yeah, I don't know if it would require additional staff to do something like that as well. I'm, you know, I'm hoping to, open to listen to, but I need an additional information for myself to, uh, make a quick res- uh, I, I feel I don't have enough information to make a, a good decision on it at this time. But I'm open to hearing more about it.
Enough information.
And in terms of, yeah, in terms of the IDs as well, yeah, because a rapid response team, um, what does that entail? Yeah, I'd like to have more. Yeah.
Maybe, you know, maybe we can start with a small, um, try, like maybe bring like a packet of information to the, uh, business, you know, like a resource for the city, you know, on that collaboration with other electroficials on the resource they have. Maybe that one, one is now will be expensive and we can do it. Uh, the other one is any way if the city can create like a WhatsApp? WhatsApp, the ad, is any way could, uh, the city can do like it? Because I know we're using the emails or, you know, the social media or anything like that.
Ha- having WhatsApp as a, another option for.
Yeah, for the residents and for that, um, for the residents, for the business. So instead of sending email, maybe we can send, uh, alert or the service.
We can look into what that, um, what that entails if that's, um, an enrollment, like similar to like the text messages. If there's a group, yeah, we can look into what that looks like. Um, and I just, I do want to caution on the rapid response team. Um, I think I just would want to caution away from like sending out a message if ICE is in town, having the city send out a message because that, that could be perceived as, as, as us interfering with, um, with their operations. So I think, I, I don't know if that's what was meant by that, but I just want to make sure that, that, that's the only thing that, um, I wanted to kind of clarify is what the idea or the vision behind that was so that we were able to bring back the right type of information for council's consideration.
It's more for information.
Yeah, more for information.
More for information.
Connecting people to nonprofits, things like that, it wasn't.
Yeah.
The, the latter.
I was just, um, so I think we are, we actually are working right now on getting a number of, uh, re- immigration-related resources together through the, um, the Business and Community Resource Center. So I think ultimately it's just about, um, just how to distribute that, right? Using our, our existing, um, resources and then potentially look into what, um, because I know, I know WhatsApp is used for person-to-person communication, so we'll just have to look in how it's used for like mass communications to folks, so, um.
And wouldn't those impacted, uh, families fall into like, like with the, those, our resource center? Wouldn't they be able to get assistance through that area?
So, that, that's where we could certainly connect, that's where we would connect people to those resources that are, that are already available to the extent that they are. I believe what the Vice Mayor was talking about, more creating our own program and funding our own program. So, um, that's what we would have to get.
Would that require something different? If we already have that in place, like create something different?
Well, I mean, that's a, that's a policy decision that council.
What was the program that's in place that you're talking about?
Well, it's just there's other, there are, there are maybe ca- county-wide programs that.
Right, 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 but what I'm suggesting is that we appropriate a fund. So for example, like, let's say the amount is a thousand dollars or five thousand dollars per family, right? Like if, if you are the breadwinner in the family, like in my family, if my partner got deported, we wouldn't be able to afford the mortgage. It would be, I mean, we wouldn't be able to afford the mortgage. We would not be able to afford groceries, gas, things like that, because my only salary is council, right? Um, and this is a stipend. So what I'm suggesting is for these individuals that work really hard and could possibly lose their jobs because they are deported and they can no longer financially support their family, I am suggesting that we create a fund, whether, whatever those guidelines may be around that, whether we say you have to be a San Fernando resident, you have to, and how you prove that, so on and so forth. Those like guidelines can be created. I'm not saying that these people need to go apply at county, you know, that takes a whole nother process. What, I'm suggesting that we take action now and it's a little frustrating when we're here, you know, making suggestions and I think sometimes it comes out across like, oh, that doesn't make sense, but that's, that's why we're, I'm bringing it back to staff so you can bring me back something on the next council meeting so that it is more outlined, right? Um, if you want it to be more particular, yes, we, how do we allocate a thousand to five thousand dollars per family that may have lost their bread, the breadwinner in their family? Now, this, uh, single, this mom is raising three, four, five children. I don't know what that looks like, but what I'm suggesting for us to do something or figure out something. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, may I, so I think, I guess what I'm hearing from both of you is our questions on the daisies. If we can get, if those resources exist, are you opposed to us connecting them immediately? Do you want it to be a San Fernando fund or is the point, let's get them the help they need as soon as possible? Because if that already exists and we can connect them immediately, like can we do it that way? And, and I think that's what we're finding out from, uh, I think that's what our, our, uh, Deputy City Manager was saying that we might, I don't know, I mean, we can, we can say we want to do this fund or we want to get them the service, the resources that they need immediately. And if that, if that's already possible, are you opposed to doing it the way it's already possible?
Well, it's already currently possible, given that we have our Community Resource Center, that families can come apply for any aid from the county. That's what you're referring to, right?
Yes, and, and from my stand, I'm just trying to make sure that, that staff has clear direction, I want to make sure.
Yeah, so because that's already possible, I'm not suggesting that we further look into that. What I'm suggesting is that we create a fund ourselves.
A more general fund, right?
Correct.
So you'd have to place that on the budget as a budget item, right? That's what you want to do.
Uh, do we have to, I don't have to put it as a budget item, I can just bring it as an action item as for the next council meeting?
Uh, yeah, I mean, eventually we'd need to come back as a budget item.
Right.
So we'd need to come back, uh, but if, if you're just, if you're just looking for information and on maybe some other, some other programs, I'm just, then we can certainly bring that back as an information item at the ne- at the next council meeting. Um, and then, yeah, that like on different ways that these have been, we've seen these structured. If we want, if council wants us to look into how they're structured in other places, if there's something similar, um, and then we can bring information back on that and then council can decide, you know, where to go from there.
Yeah, I think, I mean, whatever comes first, right? If we're having the budget and we allocate funds now and then in the future we, uh, have another council meeting to discuss what the outlines are, I'm okay with that as well, either or.
So, so one other option that I want to put out there is, I don't know if this con- counter- contradicts what you're trying to do and it's somewhat similar to what Councilmember Garcia said, but if the county, for example, already has a program, if we can contribute funds to them and then they specifically administer it for San Fernando residents, that might be another way to do things. For example, I know that with the ARPA funds, there was that five hundred thousand dollar lottery that I'm not crazy about that took place. But from what I understand, it was City of San Fernando, ARPA funds that the county that administered and then distributed to businesses in San Fernando for ten thousand dollar stipends. So that might be another way, so we don't necessarily use our staff to do it, we just supply the funds and the county potentially administers it. So just some food for thought on another way to maybe facilitate the process.
Or, don't we also have our, um, our housing, our homelessness services? Don't they have a way to provide emergency services if someone is in danger of getting kicked out of their home? We can immediately give them rental assistance, can we not? Or can we, we have some of these services? So I'm just saying, if we have the service available, let's connect them immediately versus setting up a new fund and we can even work with, if we want to do a MOU, I know a nonprofit that just provides free food, free groceries and we can have them, you know, maybe on call and, and they love doing it. And so we can provide them the rental assistance, the groceries, you know.
Maybe staff can brainstorm with all these ideas and give us options, you know, A, B, C, D and whatnot so that we can figure out the best way to, uh, to apply it, since there might be a few different ways to do it.
But I, but, but I would, um, Councilmembers, so Lord, myself are more concerned to have specific funds in our city, like, um, the supervisor. I remember, uh, I attend one of the meetings and they allocate funding specific for legal, uh, issue for the, uh, families. Uh, and, uh, in our city, I'm not sure if we have any of those services that we provide, like say a families and, you know, in crisis, we can provide like, I don't know, five hundred dollars or a thousand dollars, you know, one time or some similar like that. This is like in crisis and it's not going to be like, uh.
And so you're saying for legal services?
For legal service, for legal housing or, you know, whatever the need it is at, at the time. Because right now, like, uh, Councilmembers, so Lord, you say it's a lot of families are losing the, uh, some members of the family and, you know, they maybe not going to be available to, uh, pay the rent or, you know, or the bills or, you know, whatever. Or even to go to work, right now it's a lot of families that are not, are not, uh, working at this moment, at least.
Ms. Kith, did I say that right? Do we have the ability to give families in San Fernando, uh, funds for rent if, if there's an emergency? Can we do that quickly?
We currently do through Home Again LA, but what we need to verify with them is.
We currently do through Home Again L.A., but what we need to verify with them is um they verify the status. If it needs to be immigration status, if it is um if they need to have a, yeah, so we'll check with Home Again L.A. because that's what our part of their service with us for is to assist family um at risk of experiencing homelessness and that they can prevent rental assistance or deposit. So we'll look into that.
Thank you. Yeah, I I think, yeah, just to clarify, I am supportive of all the things that we have currently in place and connecting residents to those services. What I am asking for is to um ensure that we can have a a fund for people who have lost their income due to current immigration activity, okay? Like a family member being detained. Basically delivering direct cash aid to impacted individuals and families. That is what I'm suggesting. Thank you. And we can go around if you need more direction. If I don't know if that I I want to make sure that I'm answering all of council's questions in regards to that, like if if it is not clear what I'm suggesting, if you would like to be supportive or not. So I know that you need direction, Nick. So do you have that direction or not?
How much money are you proposing to put in that account?
I think that um as of now, we can, I guess, look into it. Um, I'm I'm imagining somewhere, I mean, I don't know, right? But what I would imagine would be helpful is like a thousand to five thousand dollars. But again, I'm not sure how much we have to be able to give one and how much I guess is like specifically, I don't.
Well, you need a total amount, you know, because I don't know many families you want to have. How many families do you want to help? Because you want the the amount to be a thousand dollars or or up to five thousand dollars per family.
Right.
So how much is the total amount that you want in that account?
I think we can look into maybe possibly if other cities have already done this um and see if what the total amounts are. If we're saying that we want to be supportive and we want to look into it, I don't have all the answers, right? And that's why I'm putting it forward.
Yes, and and we'll, we can, it it again, if council, I I just want to make sure there's at least agreement of three because I will say this is a lot of work. Um, we can bring back the information, but I I just want to set the expectation so that folks know, similar to, we we did these CDBG loans last year on um small business loans, right? And and there's always criteria and and it's always difficult to make sure that the funds are going to the right people um and how to qualify that, how to vet them. You know, those things and those are all, those are all administrative um tasks. So uh I this is, this is really just, I just want to make sure we, and maybe the first step is bringing back information on what that looks like and and not get caught up initially on the total amount. Um, just so that we can at least put forward maybe what a program might look like. Um, so that we can at least do an analysis on what that that administrative lift is and then get councils, get some feedback from council on the level to which we do vet, you know, people that put claims in, you know, to to draw down from this fund, right? Because there's there's all different levels of of from very little vetting, which gets more money out, but then, you know, has you don't know if it's always going to the right places to a high level of vetting, which takes longer and is more of a burden. But you have more control over where those funds go. So I think that's the first thing we would want to do. And maybe if if council is supportive of that, we can bring back something in July that has um, you know, that has at least an outline or bones for some potential program recommendations and sort of the what what the different levels of you know, ease of of administering each each kind of level of program would be. And that might be a good first step before talking too much about, you know, getting lost in the in the total amount. If that's, if I may suggest that as a.
That sounds, that sounds good to me. Just the first level of it.
Yeah, and I would just, but I would, can we just also include uh the resources we have available? So I don't know if we're set on, it has, we have to have a San Fernando fund to pay their rent if we can pay for it in the other budgeted items we already have. Uh, the point is to get them the resources and we would, I would be open to also, okay, Home Again can like hand them a check for their rent payment.
Does Home Again hand out checks for rent payments?
They provide rental assistance, yes. But again, we have to understand whether or not you if they, if you need to prove documented citizenship to.
Yeah, can you, yeah, bring that information back.
Yeah, in that discussion, we can include um a a much more comprehensive resource list of of sort of uh immigration support resources, uh what's already established, what is available to San Fernando residents. Um, and then I'll, and then also any other program partners like Home Again L.A. that may be able to to help. So we can include that all in the same um that same discussion.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Mr. Kim, will you have enough direction at this time?
I guess so. I just wanted to, um, that that seems to also um encompass a little bit of that rapid response team. So maybe that same staff report will include sort of some other ways of disseminating information in that same because we could talk about this is all the information and a piece of that report can also be how we disseminate that and so how we get it out. So maybe that can be rolled into that staff report. Um, and then lastly, I just wanted to make sure that council is okay with us putting together sort of a public service announcement type of video on pro, you know, peaceful protesting and um identifying San Fernando police officers and um uh in the in the identifying, you know, potential uh agitators. If that's, you know, something, we can certainly work on that as well. So it doesn't seem there's any dissent, so we can, we can do all of those things.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, and then you missed the ID card. Um, we will, we'll see what the, what are the programs we can specifically look at the San Francisco. That would be a separate. I think that would be a separate agenda item because it's not as related, but we can look into what that entailed.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I believe we're missing one part in deciding the discussion we have for deleted.
Yes, that's what uh, that's what Kenika was just.
Okay.
Was just uplifting. So um uh, so there's a few things. So we do have, again, that statement. Um, I I think all council expressed an interest in having a statement. So we're asking for some council feedback on what that statement is. Um, if there's something that we can reconcile and have something that looks like a joint statement, we'll move forward with releasing that. If not, we'll try to bring that back at the, for approval at the next council, um, again, the next council meeting. So if we do have a special meeting, maybe we could do that in a special meeting upcoming.
All right. Sorry, but he respond to the email they um they sent us today. It was sent out today, right? Have not resend it, resend the email.
Yeah, the only thing I, I, you know, sometimes in life you have to make decision, you know, because it's a crucial, it's a crucial how that uh the political arena precede our city, you know, not having a statement right away when somebody's being mistreated and be so brutal, you know, how be treated. And believe me, Alex Padilla is not my best friend, but at this moment, he represent a good amount of immigrants and he's fighting for our community. And I just, hopefully, uh, we all take it really seriously, this situation. Because if they can treat him like that, how is going to be our community be treated? And ICE is not, is going to be like for two or three months here in our cities, in our community. I feel like really sad. It's a sad day.
I agree with uh council member Lopez. I wish that we had issued a response sooner. And I understand that we all have concerns over you know, Brown Act violations and this isn't, you know, this, these are part time positions. You can't necessarily get all five of our opinions right away. So I understand all that, but it would be something, it would be nice to release something by tomorrow where we are at least at the very latest, where we are at least thanking him for his patriotism. Um, affirming his right to be able to uh ask uh straightforward, you know, candid questions regarding immigration. And, you know, lauding essentially his heroism um for trying to protect due process and immigrants. I mean, to me, I I'll prob, I'll be the first to admit that I'm biased. You know, Alex Padilla has always been a hero of mine. I've, I've always appreciated him since I was a kid. He actually used to do neighborhood watch meetings at my grandparents' house where I also lived. So I remember seeing him since I was uh, you know, in grade school. But for those reasons and many more, I think that having a statement out tomorrow would be great. So Mr. Campbell, is there any way that we can get a statement out without having to have a special meeting? And I know there's a lot on your plate, especially after
Yeah.
uh, our our agenda item, but what would you recommend for us to expedite that?
Uh, the quickest way would would honestly to be reply to to the the email that was circulated for a statement. Um, and then have reply with your thoughts on it.
Can we simply affirm, does everyone feel comfortable enough giving them authority to release it? I'm fine.
I had one sentence that I was going to suggest edits, but.
Can you do it before the end of today's meeting? So I'm gonna, I support you releasing it either as is or with the one sentence edit. And if you want to, you're going to get the one sentence tonight. Does anyone else want to chime in so he has direction on all?
I'm supporting.
Good.
Yeah, I mean, that's, it's easy to do. Again, we just, we, I I hesitate to speak on behalf of all five council.
I completely understand where you're coming from. So I'm not blaming you.
A hundred percent. If, that's why we sent something out for you all to consider. So if you're good with it, it will go out tomorrow.
It was not like there's four yeses with one edit, but.
I'll go ahead and also send you an edit, Nick. Thank you.
So then I I, I'm going to say that my direction is I trust staff to make the decision on the edits that are sent to them. So we can have a statement out by tomorrow.
Thank you.
That's fine.
Certainly do that.
Okay, so you seem to have direction on that.
All right. That's fine. Okay.
On the last thing, I wanted to do this the last time I was on the city council, but then COVID hit, so I never got around to it. But the year that COVID hit, I had wanted to invite him to our national night out. So this has nothing to do with his current act of heroism. This is what I wanted to do back in 2020, but I would like to give him uh, a community recognition award, like something like really spiffy. And so it would be nice if we can invite him to our national night out or our Christmas uh celebration. I'm sure he has a pretty busy schedule, but given that he lives in L.A. County, maybe it's something that he can accommodate. And maybe we can figure out something really spiffy to to get him for uh as a recognition.
All right. Our next item on the agenda is receive a presentation on the initial financial plan of the water and sewer rate study and provide direction on the proposed rate increase implementation process. This is item number 12. Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, our public works director, Wendell Johnson, will lead us through this discussion.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council and members of the public. Tonight, we bring forward a key component of our ongoing efforts to ensure the long term sustainability of San Fernando's water and sewer system. As the council is aware, we've been working over the past several months on a comprehensive financial plan and rate study that will allow us to reasonably manage our aging infrastructure, meet current and future regulatory requirements and ensure high quality service to our community. To support this effort, the city engaged in a professional rate consultant with deep experience in utility financial planning. This consultant has been working closely with staff to evaluate our current rate structures, ex uh asset, our uh capital and operational needs and develop a range of financial scenarios that would reflect both fiscal responsibility and equity for ratepayers. Tonight's presentation will walk you through the initial findings and recommendations for the study. You'll hear about uh project system needs, potential rate adjustments and key decision points that will be asked the consul consul to consider. The intent is to receive your feedback, direction and questions so we can continue refining the plan and move towards a schedule for the community outreach and eventual up adaption. At this time, I'd like to introduce Anthony Ofsky from uh Robert uh Nut High Incorporated. Victor Mesa, who will also lead uh part of the discussion here tonight. He's our operations manager.
You can hear me? Oh, great. Perfect. Thank you so much, Wendell. Um, uh, good evening, uh, Madam Mayor and the rest of the council. I hope everybody's brain is still working. It's pretty late at night. Uh, Victor did confess to me that he's been up since six thirty this morning. So um, and we're going to try to keep this brief, but uh this is very important as far as future funding of the water and sewer utilities, as Wendell mentioned. Um, and one thing to keep in mind is that since the previous rate study, which occurred in 2019, uh, everybody has seen record inflation. And that has actually occurred to the utility as well. Um, so when we're looking at these financial plans, we have to take into account that inflation that's happened for everybody as well as the aging infrastructure and the capital needs of the city. Uh, so for the agenda today, and again, I'll try to keep this brief. Um, so if you want to wait, I'll go through the full financial plan and you can ask any questions that you have about that. And then we'll look at the rates and then the potential impacts on customers, uh citizens. Uh, so we're going to first discuss the timeline. And this is the timeline for a potential implementation. And the steps that are going to go into that timeline before we get to the implementation stage. Uh, we're going to look at the financial plan and results. We're going to discuss any potential changes that we have to the rate structure. And that's based on Proposition 218. So we're trying to ensure that rates are the most equitable possible for all customers. Uh, we're going to show the impact of those rates and then show comparison of your rates with other cities that are in districts that are local here. Um, and then again, we want to confirm your direction and a lot of that has to do with timeline. If you want us to explore any other options as far as the rates are concerned, or if you have any other questions or input. So we did kick off this meeting in February, uh, I'm sorry, the study in February. Uh, we're having our first um presentation to the council today in June. Um, discussing with staff, we're hoping to get implementation of these rates in January 2026. Um, so that will be that billing period in January. As we look at these timeline as far as getting that accomplished, in order to accomplish a Proposition 218 hearing, you need a notice time of at least forty five days when the notice is sent out and when the hearing occurs. So we try to leave enough time to uh have this hearing done in September, which means that the notice will have to go out in July. So before now in July, we'll have finalized rates and you'll be able to approve those rates based on any input that you've given today. We'll go back and look at the rates and uh provide final. And then you'll approve sending out the Proposition 218 notice and setting specifically the hearing date. So as far as the financial plan is concerned, there's a few main drivers of the costs. Uh, specifically, we want to make sure that there is enough money on hand to pay daily expenses. This is the inflating operation cost that I was talking about. Additionally, we want to make sure that the uh city has enough cash on hand to fund their reserve targets. Um, these reserve targets are taken from the district's financial policies that are stated in uh the district's financial documents. So these are specific policies that were designed in order to ensure that there is enough money in reserve in case there's potential emergencies. Um, also to fund infrastructure replacement. So the first two lines show the uh actual name of the reserve. The policy is determined uh in the financial documents. So the stabilization and contingency fund is supposed to have three months or twenty five percent of annual operating. The infrastructure replacement fund should be enough to uh fund uh the total replacement of infrastructure. Uh, there's no specific minimum or maximum for this, so we use a baseline of the average capital, planned capital improvement projects over a ten year period. Uh, the third line shows the target based on those two reserves. And the fourth and the final line shows the current estimated balance that the city has in those funds. In addition to reaching those targets, we also want to ensure that the city has enough uh cash to fund their Pago. And Pago in this instance is rate funded capital improvements. So that's anything that has to come out of that cash that's available in the city or paid for through the rates of customers. Um, you will notice that the water, uh, utility did receive a fairly large grant. Um, I'll let Victor describe that, what that goes to a little bit later, if you have any questions where that grant funding is coming to. But just recognize that city staff is actively searching for ways to pay for these, uh, capital improvement projects that are needed that are not necessarily coming from customer rates. They're trying to mitigate the impact on rates by finding funding through grants and other means. So this is the basic of the financial plan. And the, uh, bars that are shown are the expenses. So annually, you can see the orange part of the bar is the operating expenses. Uh, we're projecting those to increase approximately four and a half to five percent per year based on, uh, historical and projected future inflation. In addition to that, there will be the yellow and the green bars. Uh, those are the debt service, and that debt service is the twenty twenty-one B pension obligation that the city took out against both these utilities. And then the green bar is the capital, the proposed capital improvement projects. So the line shows the, uh, revenues that are currently collected by the city with no adjustments to the overall revenues. Where that line is below the bar, that means that the city has to use funds from their cash balance. They have to use up some of the available funds that they don't have in addition to this expenses being higher than the revenues. And this shows the depletion then of those cash balances under that status quo. If the city does nothing about the utility rates, you'll see a declining fund balance, which will be negative by fiscal year twenty thirty. So in order to mitigate that and get closer to that reserve target, which again is based on the policy that was set out in the the city's financial documents, uh, we are recommending annual increases of five percent per year for the water utility. Um, the difference between this graph and the previous graph that showed the bars and the lines, this one has a green line, and that green line is the updated revenues. So those are the revenues that are collected based on that additional five percent. And you can see in this graph that the green line is above the operating and the capital expenses each year. So instead of depleting the reserves, you'll actually be contributing to the reserves. Um, and we will reach that reserve target, which we believe is a safe reserve target for maintaining in case of emergency, as well as providing future funding for a capital that we know is gonna be needed. So similarly, I have the same graphs for the sewer utility. Um, the sewer utility includes also the pension obligation bond, uh, slowly increasing, uh, operating, inflating operating costs, as well as some major capital projects that need to happen over the next five years that are planned in the plan. Uh, currently, the sewer utility does have above the, uh, reserve target for the current cash balance. However, with the capital expenditures over the next five years, we are expecting that to decline decline below the level of the, uh, recommended reserve. So in order to counteract that, uh, we are also recommending increases to the sewer reserve fund. The sewer fund then, well, we're recommending three percent increases because there is available cash right now. Uh, we will be able to spend some of that and still maintain the level of reserves that's required by your financial plans. However, uh, we still want to have that three percent increase to ensure that we are above our reserve target at the end of the five years. Um, and I will stop there. Were there any questions specifically about any of the financial plan items?
Councilmember Garcia?
Um, are the percentages that you're suggesting the lowest ones we can implement to hit our targets?
Yeah, we identified all of the expenses and, uh, looked at the long-term financial plan. We looked at some higher amounts that would allow for additional capital spending. But working with staff, we determined sort of a good baseline recommendation for capital spending, and this was the minimum increases for that financial plan.
Uh, thank you. I think that it looks like from this PowerPoint, my other questions will be later. Thank you.
Councilmember Lopez?
No questions.
Vice Mayor Solario?
No questions at this time.
I have no questions.
Great, well, moving on then. Uh, we lost one guy too. Did I start too early for him? Sorry. Um, so we did recommend that the, um, city maintain the basics of its current rate structure. After reviewing the current rates, we determined that they were Proposition two eighteen compliant. And that just means that costs are equitably, uh, recovered from all the different types of customers, and they're recovered based on the amount of impact they have on the system. There were some small changes that we thought would be good to make for the rate structure to increase the equitability. Um, for example, currently, customers with a meter larger than six inches are paying the same rate as customers with a six-inch meter. So whereas all the other customer rates go up based on the capacity of that meter and thus the potential impact on the system that stops at six inches. So the rates that we're proposing have higher rates for eight and ten-inch, uh, meters that are currently in the system or may join the system. Uh, additionally, we did devise a pass-through charge. Um, the city has a potential of two water sources. One is the groundwater wells, and if there's some reason that the city cannot access that groundwater, there is the option to purchase water from the MWD. That water has an intrinsic cost that's higher because you're purchasing it rather than just pumping it. Um, and so we wanted to create a pass-through so that when that water is purchased, then those correct rates are being charged to those customers. You're not losing funds because of the change in water source and the additional cost that you're incurring. So that can be automatically adopted when you send out a notice thirty days later, you can charge the, uh, the pass-through rate. And finally, there was one group of customers on the sewer side, and that was the school customers that were paying, based on the number of students rather than the number, the amount of water use. Uh, we determined it would be more equitable to bill them the same as the other customers, um, specifically because it's very hard to track annual school attendance. And it felt like that this would be a much simpler way to administer the cost to those different customers. Um, so the current water and sewer rates are shown here. Again, you can see that the increasing meter size, uh, has a higher rate until we get to the six-inch meter, and that there's the one tier, the three dollars and ten cents that all customers pay per HCF of water use. And an HCF is a hundred cubic feet or seven hundred and forty-eight gallons. And I know I just filled up my hot tub, and that's about five hundred and forty gallons to fill up my hot tub. So less than three dollars to fill up a hot tub in this case. Um, as far as the sewer rates are concerned, um, residential customers pay a monthly flat rate, and that includes the assumed amount of water that those customers use. Whereas the commercial customers pay a base rate, and then they pay per HCF for all of their water use. And those different levels of rates per HCF are based on the strength of the sewer because it costs the city more to treat higher-strength sewer than it does for lower-strength sewer. So the proposed water rates in this case, and this is with the increase of five percent per year, you can see that the fixed rate for a three-quarter inch meter, which is the general meter that a residential customer would have, goes up about seventy cents. Um, the groundwater rate, and this is the current variable rate you charge per hundred cubic feet, goes up thirty cents per unit. And then the, uh, the pass-through, if the city does need to rely on MWD water, you can see the pass-through there for that increased cost, that differential between the, uh, groundwater and the MWD water. Um, each year, uh, you will have the chance to not implement a rate increase. Uh, the only thing that you determine when you do the Proposition two eighteen is the maximum rates that you're allowed to choose. So if there is some, uh, large grant that comes in that funds significant capital expenditures, uh, you can choose not to increase one of these five percent over the year. But based on the financial plan as we devise and we understand, this is the best path moving forward for that rate increase. Um, so we do look at a few different customers. Uh, the average customer, and this is the bi-monthly bill, is approximately twenty-two hundred cubic feet. Um, their bill increases seven dollars in that bi-monthly, so about three dollars and fifty cents per month. And as you see, the increase is higher for customers that use more water than for less water. For the sewer rates, again, we maintain basically the same rate structure. So, uh, residential customers pay a flat rate, whether they're, uh, single-family residential or multifamily residential. And the difference is that multi-unit residential pay one flat rate per unit. Uh, the flat rate for residential customers is actually decreased based on the cost-of-service analysis. It was determined by looking at the total sewer flow and intake to the sewer treatment plants that the, um, overall cost allocation was actually too high currently to residential customers. So that cost that is currently being recovered from residential customers will instead be recovered through the rates of non-residential. And again, this goes up that three percent per year. Um, the combined impact, and this is with the water and the sewer rates of a residential three-quarter inch meter, um, it goes down for a low user, and that would be somebody in the twenty-fifth percentile. Their bi-monthly bill would go down approximately, uh, thirty cents. But otherwise, you'll see an inclining increase to those rates. Uh, now comparing the water and sewer rates to other local agencies, um, and this would be a monthly bill. We regularize this to be monthly, so this would be the average customer, but what they would pay over a month. Um, you can see that currently, the red line, which is the city of San Fernando, is under your current rate structure for water at eleven HCF per month, would be right around the middle. And then the green line, which is the proposed rate for that same customer. Uh, similarly for sewer, in this case, the red line is the current rates, and you would go down a notch because those residential customer bills were determined to be higher than the actual cost of providing service to a residential customer compared to any of the, uh, commercial customers combined. Uh, so getting back, so the items that we do need direction from the city council is do we want to maintain the schedule? And do we want to move forward with the financial plan and finalize the rates as they are designed? So I'm gonna leave this one and any questions that you have, and we can talk about schedule or, uh, moving forward with the financial plan.
Councilmember Farado?
It's obviously something we have to do. It's always painful to do. I think unfortunately, the rates might even need to be higher than what we're being told today. And so there seems to be a middle ground. It's unfortunately going to cause, uh, some type of economic trouble for certain families. And I don't know if there's any way that we can try to mitigate that. I know that we have, we have a special rate for low-income households. Is that correct, Mr. Kimball?
If I may, uh, yes, there is a special, uh, rate, and we do have a program for, uh, low-income, uh, customers. And so that program would continue.
Okay, and how much would their rate go up? Is there any way to keep their rate steady, or will it still go up by a smaller amount?
It would still go up by a smaller amount. The notion of that program is that we relieve some of the, um, administrative costs, but in terms of the actual consumption rate, it would still be administered that way.
Well, I don't think there's any other option to maintain, uh, our water and sewer facilities, so.
Councilmember Garcia?
Thank you. So, uh, did I understand accurately that for the average family or household, it's about a, a three-dollar increase?
For their water bill, correct?
Or per month or per two months?
Uh, per month, so seven dollars for two months.
Seven dollars, okay. And this is, um, this is the maximum we can charge? Is that what you said that this was, or this is what you recommend?
This is our recommendation. What, when we go through the Proposition two eighteen process, and you do eventually vote to adopt these rates or something similar, that will be the maximum amount you can increase in a year.
Okay.
We, if we wanted to fund more capital expenditures and develop additional reserves, we can reevaluate the amounts that were calculated today and bring back a higher recommendation for a percentage increase. But this is the one that we developed with staff based on our, their understanding of the capital needs as well as funding reserves and ongoing operating costs.
Okay, and so currently, this is the recommendation to basically just cover our costs, cover the projects that we need for our sewer and water, and have a little bit in reserve should anything happen?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Lopez?
Yeah, it's, I know the resident is gonna be concerned about this increase, but if we need to do it, we had to do it. And I support what you present this, this time.
Vice Mayor Solario?
Thank you. Um, and just for some of us that don't speak water, um, can I ask a few questions? What does the meter size entail? What does that have to do with their bi-monthly fee?
So what, different sizes of meters, uh, have the potential of additional water. So you need larger pipes to service larger meters, thus more costs are included in what, to service larger meters.
So, uh, household or let's say a residential home, the, the average one or the meter size is what at a residential?
A three-quarter inch.
Three-quarter inch. And these, um, bigger meter sizes, those would be due to what?
Uh, typ- typically, commercial developments, or if there's a very large multifamily residential development or subdivision, they may need a larger meter.
I see, so most of our people are on three-fourths, like a normal household?
Correct.
And, um, can you explain to me a pass-through rate?
Uh, sure. So the way that rates are designed, um, public agencies can't make a profit. However, you should be able to charge the amount of, uh, costs that are being incurred to produce that specific unit of, in this case, water. Um, and so when the city is pumping water from groundwater, there's a certain list of costs that are included in that. Whereas if the city is buying water from MWD, there's an additional bump-up charge for that having to purchase outside water. So what's through, in that pass-through are those increase in costs between just groundwater and purchasing water.
Got it. And in terms of the pass-through rate, when is that implemented, or is that always active? Is that what we're planning for? I'm a little confused about that.
Uh, no, you would, uh, until the city needs, in in my understanding, in the past, it's fluctuated between the use of, uh, groundwater, which it primarily uses, and in times when maybe some, well, it goes down, or there's other issues within the city infrastructure needing to purchase that water, then you would be able to implement that pass-through to cover those extra costs. And, and, uh, if I'm wrong on that.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Victor Mesa. It's a pleasure to be here. Uh, the pass-through is only gonna be utilized when we utilize MWD water, and that's only under emergency situations. Right now, we're a hundred percent, uh, groundwater. We're able, we were successful, uh, activating our treatment plants back in March of twenty twenty-four. Since then, we haven't utilized any drops of MWD water. So we stopped incurring any more charges for purchasing water since March of twenty twenty-four. Although, the city still receives invoices for capacity charges and ready-to-serv fees. Those are things that we can avoid because we are a member agency, so we're getting those charges. When we talk about a pass-through is literally when we cannot provide groundwater, where we literally have to buy MWD water. That MWD water is really, uh, it's more expensive than the water that we produce. As a result, we don't wanna hurt our proposed budget or our budget forecast. So as a result, we developed this little game plan to have a pass-through rate. So then that way, when we do switch over to MWD, we're not incurring that extra charge. We're actually recouping that charge by way of rates through the customers. Once we get that treatment plant back online, we would turn off that MWD interconnection and turn off that pass-through rate. That's what we're talking about when we're talking about.
Thank you, and I just wanna make sure that the public is aware of that. I like to always say, you know, for those of people that don't speak water, we have to make sure that we're informing them of this. So what is, uh, again, can you clarify, what is the difference in amount, um, when, uh, MWD is connected versus our groundwater?
Well, there is the purchased individual, so per acre-foot cost of water that you actually draw from the MWD system. And I don't know that number. And I don't know that number off the top of my head. But it essentially equates to about $1.70 per unit, 800 cubic feet.
Just to give you a rough number, an acre-foot of water is costing us through M W D $1,300, or $1,300 roughly. And they're talking about it going up to $1,600 an acre-foot, where we could produce an acre-foot of water roughly about $600 to $700. So that's the big difference between groundwater and M W D water. We still have to treat our water. We still have to go through the disinfection process. M W D, they give us their water already as a finished product. So the cost is already incurred with the chemical injection, all the labor that it takes into it. So that's the difference there. You're getting a finished product when it's always cheaper for you to produce water than to buy water.
And this, 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 this actually provides that flexibility. The council itself would have the option of implementing the adjustment in the rate. It's a simply 30-day notice to tell our residents that, hey, because of this issue of water quality, we're having to buy water. And therefore, 30 days from now, your rate is going to increase $1.70 per unit in order to keep from, from depleting the reserves that we've built up in case of emergency or having the proper coverage for your debt coverage.
Okay. And then, maybe just as a picture, what would per acre-foot look like? What is a per acre-foot? Amount of water?
It's, it's one acre, one foot deep. So football field full of water, yeah.
Football field and one foot of water.
Right.
Okay.
About 45,000 square foot, which would be probably your equivalency of an average Costco?
Okay, good. No, and I'm just asking the question so people have a better understanding of water and they have a very informed decision when this goes out to the public. In terms of M W D water, we talk about them increasing the cost from $1,300 to $1,600 possibly? What is, is, if any, what are the things that we can do in San Fernando to not get those increased? Do we, do we have a vote or a say? What does that look like?
Yes, we're fortunately, we're very fortunate that the chairman of M W D is actually representative of San Fernando. And matter of fact, I was at a water conference this morning with, with him. So we have a voice on the board. A lot of the costs that Met has been incurring has been long-range planning, particularly in areas of the service area where they don't have the ability to move water around as much as they do in other areas. Where some areas, because of the most recent drought, their, their water supply depleted some 75%. And so it became a very more expensive ability, and the whole area of Met absorbs that rate increase. And so some of these high costs of some of these infrastructure projects that Met have had in the past are some of the driving mechanisms in that higher rate.
So does M W D take into account, or do they not, I guess at this point, the increase, how it affects like smaller cities like ours?
Yes, they're, they're very, they're very conscious of that.
Have a few more questions. We talked about water for our schools. So does that mean that the water rates for, or water payment from the schools will increase?
Not necessarily. Currently, as I mentioned, that the, it's not the water rates, it's the sewer rates. The sewer rates are based on an exact count of the number of students. So they may actually go down if their water use is lower.
Oh, okay.
It's not, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison, I guess.
Got it. So if they utilize less water or sewer, then their rates technically would go down as well, like residential?
Correct.
Okay. And I just wanted to know the impact on schools. Let's see. How do we come up with a flat rate for residential?
It's determined, again, by using the same basic fixed rate, which is, I believe it was the 35, 34.99 in the proposed rates, and then multiply that by an average water use in the billing period. So that's the delta between it. So it would be 22 units times whatever the flow, the strength of residential water compared to the other commercial water customers.
Okay. So some of our residents could then see a lower rate in sewer, but a higher cost of water. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And in terms of maximum and minimum rates, what would it look like if we implemented, and this is not a suggestion, but I guess more of a question, of a higher than 5% rate?
The overall increases. So the 5% is actually the financial plan adjustments. The rates are based on two parts. One is the increased revenue needs and then the cost of service analysis. So what the cost of service analysis does is make those costs equal or equitable between all the different types of customers. And in this case, that's meter size, for example, or customer class in the sewer rates. If you increased the financial plan and made no changes to the way the cost of service was being performed, you would just have a higher rate.
And so you said the two things were cost of service and what?
And the financial plan increases.
Financial plan increases. In financial planning, what does the city have to look out for in terms of financial planning? What are we financially planning for? Our residents should financially plan for?
So the financial plan was the first part of the study, and that looks at the long-term finances. One, capital needs. Two, operating expenses. Any other additional non-operating expenses such as debt service, potential debt service coverage needs, and also achieving fund balance targets. And again, based on the financial documents from the city, there's a specific plan of how we want to collect that correct amount of reserves. So those are the financial targets that we're trying to hit, and the plan is developed to hit all of those targets at the end of the five-year plan.
Okay. And I guess I probably had one more question. In terms of operational needs, so recently, when we, when our water wells were broken, does that go into operational needs, like planning for if our water wells were to break again and we'd have to depend on M W D water, basically fixing a new system?
So there is certain annual maintenance costs that are included in the operating budget, and there's also the planned capital expenditures. And a lot of those capital expenditures have to do with replacing aging pipelines and other various pieces of the system in order to ensure continued operation rather than having something break down on you in emergency. But there would be additional emergency funds included in the, that's what those reserves are for.
The, the current, the current financial plan generates approximately $1 million a year to invest into the water infrastructure, and about $600,000 a year to invest into the sewer. Taking a look at the actual value of the water system in account and looking at depreciation and, and the length of the life, use of life of the piping system, we're looking at like a, a 1% replacement on an annual basis. And that allows you to, to, to replace, you know, a 1% to 2% replacement on an annual basis, which allows you to replace the water system over 100 years, period.
Okay, so we're saying that at a 1%, or even the 1,600,000, you said?
Yes.
That is sufficient enough to keep our water wells running for how long?
Indefinitely. If it's a reoccurring capital investment, you're doing something every year. You know, you, you may not be, you know, for example, you may not be building a new reservoir this year, but 50 years from now, if you have this financial plant that produces this capital reserve, you'll be able to replace the reservoir when, when, when you need it. You'll be able to replace lengths of pipes that are, are trouble within the system as needed.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure to ask a lot of hard questions because I know that not all our residents understand some of these things. And we do have to plan for many different scenarios to occur in order to keep our water healthy, our water system healthy. And if we did want to plan for a water reserve, what would that look like in terms of percentage increase for annual maintenance or just operational needs?
So this gets to the target. If you wanted to add additional potential reserves. You know, the total financial plan includes, for example, approximately, for the sewer utility, 3.5 million in operating per year, and for the water utility, approximately 5.5 million per year. So some percentage of that would be additionally that you'd want to contribute to the reserve. For example, if you wanted to have something like a rate stability fund, you could do maybe 10%. So get to a reserve target of an additional 500,000 for the water utility. If we looked at that in a five-year financial plan, for example, you'd be contributing approximately additional 100,000 to that. As far as the total rate increases, that may be a 1% additional rate increase to contribute that much. I don't have the specific numbers. Again, if we want to evaluate higher reserve targets, we're happy to do that in the next iteration.
Thank you. And the only reason I bring that up is because I want to make sure that we're planning for our future, right? When the water wells broke down, we did not have the sufficient amount of funds in order to fix those, hence then leading us to get M W D water and then being on a deficit and not being able to pay and pulling from the reserves, right? So I'm interested in understanding further what a 1% increase of what you're proposing would change in the, in the long term. Like what would we be able to benefit from? What is that list of things? Could we foresee that maybe another water well would be break down and we need to pay for that? And where would that money come from? Or would it come from our general fund money?
Currently, the way, currently, the way that we set it up was, we sort of tried to earmark $1 million every year, every year, every year for some projects that we want to implement on a yearly basis. So we're earmarking $1 million so that now we can start replacing mainlines that should have been replaced 20 years ago. So this is our starting point right now. We're barely setting up our little view for the future. We feel that by setting it up this way, a 5% with a 3%, we're not impacting our residents so much, but yet we're getting enough money to start making headway into our, into our infrastructure. We're starting, we're going to earmark $1 million to replace possibly the Workman mainline. That one's been giving us problems for over numerous years. So we feel that that one should be one of the first ones online. Although there is other things behind the scenes that are, that are impacting us, with this budget that, or with this presentation and this rate adjustment, we feel that we are confident enough to make enough headway so that now we can have enough money for the next year's projects. We can't stop developing projects just because we don't have any money. We need to find money. This was one of the ways that we felt that we can make a little bit of money and start building a robust infrastructure for us, something that's been long overdue. We have to look at it in different aspects. We have to look at the treatment side, the production side, and the distribution side. Currently, we've been working on the customer service side, collecting a lot of pass-through bills, so that's made a lot of headway. So with those stuff that we've been doing this past year, I think we're putting ourselves in a better situation than we were two years ago. If we continue moving in this direction, you can see that we are going to make a little bit of headway in a few years coming. So with proper planning, I think we're going to be successful. With your guidance and with your support, I think we would be successful. So with that said, I think we're, we don't want to gouge the community by hitting them with a larger rate. I know that we want to be aggressive, we want to be ready, but our community is a disadvantaged community. We don't want to impact them more than we would have to. And that's why we took this slow approach.
Thank you, Victor. I really appreciate you guys giving us a little bit more on the work plans and what is set already to be able to ensure safe and clean water for all residents moving forward and for many, many years to come. Those are all my questions for now. Thank you.
Thank you. So the, the sewer rates, are they reflect, you know, I know last, was it last year that the city of LA increased their sewer rates, right?
Yes, yeah, last year, it kept me up at night because I actually live in, I lived in Los Angeles at the time. Yeah, Los Angeles hadn't adjusted their rates in well over 20 years. And over the next five years, the sewer rates are going to triple in, in Los Angeles. The, the common rate was approximately $35 every other month. And essentially, when they fully implement their rate, it will be substantially more. I think the first phase, it went to $70 this year, I, I believe. And then next year, it goes to 105. And then finally, it, it tops out if they implement all the increases. This, this did impact our projections because we do use Los Angeles for part of the conveyance of our water system as well as the final treatment. And this rate here reflects those cost increases that we know that are going to affect the actual treatment of the waste.
I, I thought it was going to affect us significantly more, so I'm surprised it's only 3%, right? And also, for the, the grants, I know that you have a grant amount here on the capital improvement section here. Will you be, continue to apply for grants?
Yes, we're, we're continuing to apply for, for grants as well as take a part in programs that Metropolitan is, is offering. Metropolitan has a 30-30 goal of generating 80% of our water locally. And so there's going to be incentives to local purveyors that are pumping to improve their extraction systems as well as their treatment systems. And we plan to take full advantage of that as we roll out additional treatment for, for additional quantity and quality of water.
So the particular grant that's noted here in the, in the chart, it's included in the rate, right?
Yes. And that's primarily is going to be used for the, the treatment at Wellhead 2A, okay? Which is, which is our largest producing well in, in our system.
And if you, as you're applying for grants and they are, and we are approved, any of those grants, those grants will not be affecting the rate, right? Because the rates are already set. So what will happen if we do get any grants? We are awarded any new grants?
If we, if we, if we do get, you know, additional grants that impact the, the rate, meaning that when we look at the model, what you can do is you cannot, you know, you don't have to raise it. This is the maximum rate, the 5%, we're showing the maximum rate that is in compliance with the 218 process. However, if we do receive outside monies and it reduces our capital needs, then we're able to not fully implement a future rate hike.
In the future, right? Okay. All right, that, that's all I have for now. So, does anyone have an additional question? Councilmember Farado, no?
Another 30 minutes.
I don't know how long. We still have a, a public hearings to go through?
Yeah. No, I don't have any additional questions on this one. But after this, it would be good just to have a quick discussion of the remaining
All right. So, Mr. Kimball, our next steps is to make a motion on the item. Do you want to let us know what the, what we need to motion on?
So, yeah, so the direction we're looking for today is to maintain this proposed schedule, which would be for implementation in January. which would be for implementation in January, and that includes the steps. So hopefully getting the Proposition 218 and the reporting in July, where you'll approve the Proposition 218 notice. It'll be sent to customers and then setting a rate hearing sometime in September. In between that, that would include outreach, public workshops.
So I will move item number 12 per staff's recommendation, if that's okay, because it encompasses all of this.
Yeah, and the 5, and the 3%.
Garcia will second.
Mr. Padilla?
Just wanted to clarify, this includes also passage of a resolution setting the majority protest hearing date?
That's next.
But that does set in motion, that's the formal setting in motion of the process.
Correct.
We don't need to vote, we just need a direction?
This was really just a receive and file. So unless there is, unless you don't want us to move forward, then we're just.
I'll draw my motion then.
Hey, so the direction, it seems like everyone was supportive of us moving forward, so we'll continue.
Okay, so we're good.
Thank you very much.
Moving forward. Thank you for coming, your presentation.
Mayor, just wanted to get some clarity on the next agenda items. If the majority of the council wants to continue tonight, then obviously we'll do that, but I feel that was something as important as the budget, it is important to do it. Again, as I mentioned before, during hours when people are more readily available to watch. My recommendation would be that we call a special meeting for the budget and that we finish up items nine and 13.
We have eight, nine.
Oh, we have eight?
Yes, we have two public hearings that we need to do. They should go fairly quickly. I don't expect them to be too long, but 13 is Councilmember.
I believe eight is being continued, so.
Eight, oh yeah, eight is being continued, so that's, that's quickie. And then number nine, we is a, shouldn't take long either. And then Councilmember Lopez, item 13.
Are you okay then if we have the budget approval out of special meeting? I see some head, some nodding heads. Yeah.
Okay, so we'll, once we get there, we'll, we'll decide on that. So let's move on to item number eight, which is the public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance amending Chapter 90 Traffic and Vehicles on the San Fernando Municipal Code to implement a residential parking permit program and to modify parking restrictions on of certain vehicles, including for the use of human habitation. The public hearing will be continued to July 7, 2025, regular city council meeting. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing to consider adoption of a resolution to continue maintenance of the city's streetlights, confirming the annual assessment and approving the final engineer's report for fiscal year 2025-2026 Landscaping and Lighting Assessment District. At this time, the public hearing is now open. Madam City Clerk, will you please read the, the order of procedure?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. This is the time and place for the hearing of protests, objections, or comments to the levy of assessments for fiscal year 2025 to 2026 for the City of San Fernando Landscaping and Lighting Assessment District. On June 5, 2025, notice of this hearing was given pursuant to the provisions of the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972, being Part 2 of Division 15 of the Streets and Highways Code of the State of California, and the affidavit of publication is on file in the City Clerk's office. Staff requests a motion and a second to receive and file the affidavit of publication.
So we go directly to a motion on this item? Is there a discussion?
This is just, the motion is just for receive and file of the affidavit of publication.
So is there a motion and a second?
We still have to go through the public hearing process, right? So we go to council comments, we open it up in public? Okay.
Okay. So.
So what is the next step, the standard process, or we?
We discuss it now?
No, we need a motion and a second.
Motion and a second.
To receive the affidavit, and then we'll do the public here, the public comment after.
So I motion to move forward the affidavit?
Is there a second?
A second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Lopez?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Fajardo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Solario?
Yes.
Mayor Mendoza?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And just for those that want to follow along, the order of procedure that we're going is printed in your agenda on page 266. You can see the order that we're going through.
Okay, Mr. City Manager, at this time, please provide staff presentation.
Thank you. Mr. Wendell Johnson will provide the quick engineer's report as to the method of assessment for the annual levy.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council and members of the public. Tonight, we're holding an annual public hearing for the city's Street Lighting and Assessment District, which helps fund the ongoing operations, maintenance, and electrical costs of the city's streetlight system. This is a routine process we complete every year in accordance with Proposition 218 and the Street and Highway Code. Each year, an engineering report is prepared to outline the boundaries of the district, identify the parcels that benefit from the lighting improvements, and calculate the annual assessment. The report also confirms that the cost of service remains proportionate to the benefit received by each parcel. This year, there are no proposed changes to the assessment methodology, rate, or boundary. The current assessment remains unchanged from last year, and no new charges are being introduced. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to take any public testimony, confirm the report, and to consider adopting the resolution levying the assessment for fiscal year 2025-26.
That concludes the engineer's report.
All right. The public hearing is declared open. Madam City Clerk, are there any written comments?
There are no protest written comments.
Okay, the next. So at this time, the public comment period is now closed. And we now open the discussion with council. Councilmember Garcia?
I have no comments.
Councilmember Lopez?
No comments.
Councilmember Fajardo?
Yes, I brought this up in previous city council meetings, not this year or the past year, but there are some neighborhoods that are part of this lighting assessment districts, but they actually don't have any city's streetlights, correct?
Correct. The lighting, the lighting district also pays for the operation and the electricity for your, for your traffic signals, okay, and also your lights in your public areas. So although you may not have actual streetlights on your streets, and there's, there's a lot of reasons why certain streets don't have streetlights within, within, within the community, you do benefit from the streetlights that are available in other areas of the city as well as the traffic signals that are out there.
Got it. Are there any, is there any process that we have in place? Or you don't have to email this, sorry, answer this tonight, but you can email me the answer, but is there any process in place for streets without streetlights to petition the city for streetlights? And would they be petitioning the city, or would it be SoCal Edison?
It would, it would be something that they would request from the engineering department, the engineering division of Public Works.
And then the city would have to pay for it, or SoCal Edison, or?
No, that's, it's internally controlled by the engineering.
So it would have to come from our funds, correct?
Correct. There's an additional charge, like last year, we installed one. I know that someone requested it, and we installed one last year.
Okay, so it does come out, so we do appropriate these on occasion?
Yeah, it comes out of the landscaping and lighting. It comes out of the revenue.
Oh, it comes out of the revenue.
In this particular fund.
Okay. All right, well, maybe that's something for us to further consider, how people can apply or at least putting notice out. I don't know if we can add that to our list of things to do, but it would be nice to give people the procedures on how they can actually petition for it. So that's my only question.
Vice Mayor Solario?
Yeah, I guess no further questions, but once you brought that up, I think, do we have a current process for that? And how does, how do people know how to apply for it?
I think the department will be producing an SOP, standard operating procedure, for people to apply for it. We will produce a draft by this fall, and we'll bring it to the Safety and Transportation, or the Transportation and Safety Committee, and then we'll bring it to council, but it's a couple of things that we are working on in the department.
Thank you for clarifying. No further questions.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
To Councilmember Fajardo's point, I just want to say I've gotten down those streets a couple of times, and the, those streets are very, some of them love having no lights, so they're a little divided on whether they even want lights, so. Interesting, it's interesting.
Okay, thank you. I have no questions, so is there a motion?
I move the item.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Lopez?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Fajardo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Solario?
Yes.
Mayor Mendoza?
Yes.
Motion passes.
If there are no objections, the hearing is now closed. We're gonna go over to item number 13, which will be Councilmember Lopez's item. Which is the discussion and consideration on establish a waste hauling ad hoc committee. This item was placed on the agenda by Councilmember Lopez.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just have a few concerns for some of the residents. And also I remember that when they did a presentation, Councilmember Fajardo has some concerns on this.
Yeah.
And I would like to have this committed and look into the details and how we can improve it. And that's all.
Can you elaborate, like what you're?
Well, improving on the service of the residents and to look more on the specific and how the contract we have with this company, I believe we have this company for over 10 years. And I'm sure if you is the best service that we have at this moment. And especially at the time, I remember I request to have some information on how this company can support our nonprofit or argued in the community, and I didn't receive anything yet, so I would like to look into more details, and I hope, you know, some of my colleagues can join me in this.
The contract for Republic Services is going to be over in 2027, early 2027. So then next year, early next year, they're gonna start the process for the RFP. And in maybe going over the entire RFP as to what our expectations are of the new, of the company that we want to hire for our trash pickup. So maybe, you know, that would be a good time to go over all of the, all of the things or issues that come up with Republic Services that we're looking for, you know, or that, or complaints that, you know, or concerns that you have. And maybe at that time, we could develop an ad hoc to determine what it is that the needs are, or that, and go line by line on that contract. That would be at the time. Because right now, well, the contract is set as such, you know, as, as it was developed at that time, and maybe the things have changed, I'm not sure. But any specific concerns in terms of, you know, in terms of an issue or a resident might have, or a, or a business might have, they, they should usually go to the Republic Services or go to, we have someone here in Republic Services that is stationed here in City Hall, where they can call, they call the office, or they can come here to City, to City Hall and speak with the representative, or Christine, Christina Vargas is also the representative. And then if they don't get the answers that they want, they can call city staff who will troubleshoot the situation and try to get the issue resolved. I mean, that's how I've done it. You know, if I have a constituent that calls me, that's how I've handled it. I go through Republic Services and then I'll go through city staff so they can troubleshoot the issue. In fact, I did have a resident who was very persistent. They were, I guess, for some reason, her trash was not being picked up. So she dealt with Republic Services several times till finally they started to pick it up. And then one day she didn't, they did, she didn't put it outside her trash bins, and they called her. And she says, oh, you know, you didn't put your trash bins out, and she said, oh, you know, and it's just that she had forgotten, so she came out in slippers and pajamas and all and brought her trash cans out and, and was very pleased that they had given her a call. She appreciated. So just like she called and complained, she called to let me know, and I meant to let staff know that, you know, just as we complain about things, they also do good things, and we should also report the good things that the companies do as well. You know, we can, but anyway, that's, that's the experience that I had for that one particular constituent.
But I, I would like to have, with all the respect, I would like to hear from my colleagues and see what is the feedback from them.
Okay, Councilmember Garcia?
I think that the way the mayor phrased it is a good idea. If maybe this ad hoc can review the concerns of the community and then go through what we're looking for in the next contract, and kind of so that we don't have to go line by line in the meeting, they can present recommendation to us. So I don't know if that, if that is fitting with your, is that fitting with your purpose to kind of seek to review and, and see how, what the experience is like and how that can affect on what we're looking for in the next contract? Is that, does that fit? And I would just recommend, if we move forward with this, I would be supportive of Councilmembers Lopez and Fajardo to be on it. I know they're the ones who have been vocal about their concerns. So does that fit with what you're looking for?
Councilmember Fajardo?
Yeah, I think this was, is a great idea. I've wanted to bring back an ad hoc on all of our contract services because I know that people also have complaints with, and I've mentioned this before. The reason I didn't bring it to this meeting and the reason I didn't bring the procedural manuals that our meetings have been going so long, that I figured that once we got past the budget, I would try to slowly trickle in some items, but I think that it's important to start addressing this now, so thank you for bringing it forward. The contract is pretty voluminous. I don't know exactly how many pages, but it fits in like a binder like this. So it's like probably 200 to 300 some odd pages. I also worry that if we wait until next year, it's going to impact staff to do it in a really hasty schedule. We aren't going to have as much time in detail dedicated to the process, whereas if we do it now, we can kind of go bit by bit, first by community concerns and delving into that, and then going into the different parts of the contract. Councilmember Lopez and I meet anyways for the mall ad hoc, so we can nicely tie it into that ad hoc and take this bit by bit. So I'd, I'd love to be on it. I'd love for us to prove it tonight, and then maybe sometime next month, we can expand it to also include the, the arborist and the street sweeping as well, because I do get complaints from residents on those. And, you know, maybe it is something about better communication, but maybe it's not. Maybe there's, you know, something deficient about the contract. So it's about figuring out what the problems are and why residents aren't satisfied with different services. And A, how to get them satisfied in the interim, and B, suggestions for the city in the future.
Vice Mayor Solario?
Yes, I'm supportive of this item. I do think that it's better to get ahead of it now, given that the contract will be coming up in the next year and a half, or whenever we go to RFP. But yes, I'm supportive of the item. Thank you.
You know, I am supportive. However, I, I don't want it to become where we're like micromanaging staff and telling them how to do their job, because I feel that they know how to haul trash and how to do their job. I just think that, you know, if it's going over the contract, I'm good with that. But if you're going to be telling staff how to, how But if you're going to be telling staff how to, how to do their, how to do their work, it's, I think it's out of our, you know, I, that's, we're not trash haulers. We don't, that's not what we, you know, that's not a, where we have experience on how to do that. And I don't have experience how to do accounting, how to do, um, policing, or, or, you know, um, you know, how to work within, uh, human resources. That's not my, my strength, you know? We each have our strengths in the work that we do. So I think that we, that we should, you know, respect that and allow staff to do their job as they, they know how to do it. They, they work with it every day, and they know how to do it. I think that we need to allow them to do their work. And if, if this is to focus on the contract for an RFP, I'm fine with it. But in terms of, of, of getting into their, uh, micromanaging that department, I, I, I don't, uh, support that. As long as it doesn't include that, then I'm fine with it. That's all I can say.
So I'll make a motion to, um...
And then also, when is it gonna start? Because we're in a transition period right now a little bit. And I, you know, I just want, you know, want to make sure we have sufficient time for them to, for the transition period a little bit here.
I think Councilmember Fajardo's suggestion of next month is a good, a good reasonable time to start.
Yeah. Okay, so, and what, what will we call it? That, huh? Because you're gonna incorporate the?
I think that, because Mr. Fajardo? It was meant to be, like, my initial vision was the contract services ad hoc, but we're not, we can't really pass that today, because it's agendized as the waste hauling ad hoc. So my recommendation is to pass it as it's written today. And then if you all allow us to place an item on consent, so we can just pass it to broaden it, because it really should be about the three main services.
Because others may want to participate on a, on a ad hoc for this. They may want, you know, want to be a part of it.
Yeah, so I'm okay with moving it forward as the waste hauling as of now, and then, uh, further discussion for the other ad hoc, or maybe being one ad hoc, just to open it up to other council members that want to participate.
And get that experience in there.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah.
So was there, was there, was there a motion?
Um, I'll, I'll make the motion for the, uh, waste hauling ad hoc to include Councilmember Lopez and Councilmember Fajardo to not micromanage our staff.
I mean, just to put everyone at ease, I mean, typically, the purpose of an ad hoc is to study an issue and then bring back a proposal or set of proposals to the full council for ratification.
And I'll second, and Mr. Kimball, is the, is it understood, or do we need to include as part of the motion that we can expand the name and bring it back as consent?
Yeah. Yes.
Oh, I see.
They're usually asked for about a year, and then they're over, and then you start a new ad hoc for the next, uh, contract that you're gonna be reviewing.
Other council members that want to serve on a treaty contract.
Okay, so I guess I'll bring it back then.
Yeah. You won't be able to serve on all of them, Councilmember Fajardo.
Contract services ad hoc, but, um, okay. So then, I second it as stated by Councilmember Garcia.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Lopez?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Fajardo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Solario?
Yes.
Mayor Mendoza?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Ma- Mayor, I just want to say quickly, a clarification. It's not my intention to go after, you know, the employers or that, uh, the contracts that we have. I don't see myself behind the truck and finding if they pick it up, that trash or that, or not. You know, I'm just looking for, you know, to comply and do my job, what the resident asks me to do. And, you know, I respect all, all of the, the staff that we have, and that is not my intention, just to make sure that we are in compliance with our residents and, and the contracts. Thank you. Thank you for your support.
Okay, so, um, let me see. So now we're going to, um, we're on the, on the budget, but we're, we are going to set a special meeting for the budget?
It sounds like, um, due to the late hour, I, I think it's probably prudent to have a, a fresh, uh, set of synopses before, when we're considering this. Um, staff would actually recommend, if possible, if council are available on June 30th, so two weeks from tonight, um, to set the date for the, uh, special meeting on June 30th. And that would be solely to, um, kind of review and, and hopefully adopt the budget. So if all council members are available, we could go ahead and continue that to June 30th. And then, uh, just in the, in the interim, what we'll do is we'll send out, Erica put together a list of all of the enhancements, um, city manager and city council recommended, they're all in the same spreadsheet. So we will forward that out again, and just make sure everyone has a chance to look at that prior to June 30th, so if you need to add, edit. Um, she may have some follow-up questions for a few council members as well, but, um, we'll send that out in the next day or two. Um, and then, if everyone's available on June 30th for that special meeting, we can hopefully get things wrapped up.
Okay. Hopefully, we can get it done on that day.
If not, we, we can do a, a continuing resolution, um, if it takes a little bit longer.
Is the 30th good for everyone?
Mondays are the easiest day for me, so.
Councilmember Garcia? Lopez? Yes? Vice Mayor? Yes? Okay. 30th?
Perfect, so we'll continue the public hearing to June 30th, Monday, June 30th.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So then, um, right here, where's my? So we're now at, uh, staff comments?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Are there any staff that want to make us stay here even later? Seeing none, we will go to city council comments.
Okay, we're at city council comments. Councilmember Garcia?
Okay, for my comment, I'm just, I'm actually just gonna do a prayer. So, God have mercy, wrap your arms around the scared, the separated, and the suffering. Bring peace to the hearts filled with anxiety. Grant protection to those who are vulnerable. Soften the hearts of those in power, and remind them that behind every name and number is a story, a family, a soul. Let love guide us, let hope strengthen us, and may we never stop believing that justice, unity, and peace are possible. Amen.
Councilmember Lopez?
Yes, I just wanted, um, share, you know, that in these difficult times, um, we had to get united. You know, maybe we have a difference, point of views on different issues, but right now, you know, I see our communities crying for justice. Our community looking af- after us to take that stand and unify. You know, like, like I say, you know, like, you cannot believe it, you know, I, I'm so sad when people say criminals, you know, that immigrants are all criminals. Guess, guess what? We're not criminals. I came to this country when I was 10 years old. And look at me, I'm here, you know, trying to improve our community and raise my family. And I'm sure all those families are doing the same thing. Yes, it's like, maybe, uh, 5% of those people, they are doing something crazy and there, but, you know, the 95% are good people. And hopefully, our presidents and our elected officials, you know, had the heart, you know, to do something right. And I just pray for, for them and their families.
Councilmember Fajardo?
Yes, first, I'd like to say that I echo the sentiment of praying for the families, especially those who have been victimized by these deportation raids. They seem to be rounding up people indiscriminately. And it's really terrifying what they're doing, because they've even raided courthouses, and people are going there specifically to be law-abiding. So you essentially put immigrants in this conundrum, where if they abide by the law, they might be deported. And then if they don't abide by the law, because they're scared of being deported, they might be deported. And so it's almost a no-win situation, even if they're following the rules, even if they're contributing to our community. I hope that these demonstrations show that the community is united in terms of having fair rules and fair treatment of all people. Uh, for what it's worth, the polling shows that most Americans don't want immigrants raided indiscriminately. They want violent people out of the country, but they want people who have kids to have a pathway to citizenship. They want Dreamers to have a pathway to citizenship. They want people who are gainfully employed and productive to be able to continue working and have a pathway to visas and to working. I don't see how it benefits everyone, and when they have Black Hawk helicopters in Ventura chasing people through strawberry fields, it's a ridiculous use of resources, but on top of that, it's also inhumane. On a unrelated matter, but also on a sad note, I would like us to close today in memory of Representative Mel Hortman and her husband Mark Hortman of Minnesota. They were murdered in a, uh, in a horrific act of violence that was deemed to be politically motivated, obviously by someone very mentally ill. But it also reminds us of the dangers out there and the dangers of misinformation. And I hope that we, as a city council, can do our best to make sure that our differences never spill into, uh, broader disagreements than they need to be, and that people don't misinterpret it, misinterpret our spirited differences here on the council. And even though they didn't pass away, I'd also like to mention that Senator John Hortman and his wife, um, Yvette, were also shot. I believe that they are currently in critical condition. On another note, uh, which I briefly mentioned, my, um, sixth grade and eighth grade teacher, Cecilia Martinez, who is my planning commissioner, she did announce that she will be retiring, but she's giving me the opportunity to find someone first, in case there's a meeting, so that there's a vacancy isn't left, which is very noble of her to do. So I will start interviewing people sooner than later, so she doesn't feel, uh, entrapped in the position, especially because since she's done such a great job for the last two years. I did offer, uh, to meet with the people who came today for the vector control. And if you happen to know anyone else, I'm open to meeting with anyone and everyone. I have a few other people in mind as well. So it may end up being, you know, five or six people with whom I meet, but I'm, uh, happy to do that, so feel free to send their information my way, and then I will have staff set something up. And, uh, those are my comments for the evening.
Vice Mayor Solario?
No comments, thank you.
And I just want to say that, you know, my heart goes out to the families who are being separated, you know, particularly the children, and, um, I, you know, just really feel for them that, uh, the fear that they live, not knowing if they're, when they come home, if, uh, their parent will be there or not. And, um, I just, that's all I can say. And, uh, also, uh, you know, I know Councilmember, uh, Lopez has her position of, of transportation and public safety is still vacant?
No, she already has, um, application for, uh, for, please, I received it today.
Oh, okay. Okay, great, great, good to hear. All right, so, uh, given, um, there is no additional comments, then, uh, this meeting is adjourned.